We'll call the meeting to order. Chief Mantello, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance, symbol of flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second.
They're moved in second and any changes? We're all good?
Correct, no changes that I have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Minutes for March 11th. Any discussion or changes?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mary Lee.
Okay, the bottom page, either I'm reading it wrong, three lines up, it says, "The only time it may apply would be emergency meetings." I would think it would be, "may not apply."
I believe you're correct.
Thank you. Okay, on the second page, approval of the minutes. Our cooms made the motion, it says seconded, but it didn't say by whom. Down further, way to the bottom, Robert Spalding made a motion to appoint town attorneys. The last line says, "Motion carried four to zero." I think it should be five to zero, because we were all here.
I would agree with that.
On to page three, recreation update. Halfway down, it starts, "The recreation committee has been presented the building at a cost." Isn't it the town that presented the building? We haven't presented the building to the recreation committee. Am I wrong in reading that?
I would say that you're correct. We have never actually done anything of that nature. The town owns the building. The rec department is part of the town and they use the building, but I don't recall ever presenting the building to the rec department.
What do you say on that one? Is the recreation has been, basically you're saying the town's been presented an opportunity. This building is a good opportunity for the town. He said the single greatest opportunity would be that, for economic growth.
I just want the town replacing the recreation committee.
Yeah, that first part of that sentence needs to get restructured so that, you know, this building is presented to the town and the recreation committee, the opportunity or something along those lines. Does that make sense to everybody?
It said the town has been presented a building.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Because somebody could read that wrong and make an assumption that's not correct.
That it's theirs. Okay, now, page four. The first paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight lines down. And I think it should be, "So they do know where we stand." I think a "we" should be put in there. And down to the next of the last line, it's, "We need to prioritize." And the very bottom line, when "we" originally took. Two "we's" and a "to."
Let me follow you. You got those, Mike?
No. I was just caught with where you were at. Allison, I don't know.
Allison, you all set with those?
What was just the last part on the last line?
The last line is, "We originally took possession."
Okay, got it.
Okay, now down to the request of the transfer of the library. Both that. Actually, the next three paragraphs, it says, "So voted." Everywhere else, it says, "Motion five to zero." And I think it should be consistent all the way through.
Well, someone had changed for the next three items too, Mary Lee. The ruby lease has the same verbiage, and so does the snow and ice plan approval. Has the same verbiage.
But shouldn't it still say that it was voted five to zero?
I agree with you.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying that it's in three places.
Yep. And... You'd think I was an English teacher, and I'm not. Page five. Second paragraph, one, two, three, four lines down. Three goes up, thirty. It says, "Who, I can't see it." Who the state, if they could form their own fire district, shouldn't it be, "They" purchase the water from, after it says, goes up Route 30. It says, "Who purchased waters from the Castle Fire District One?" Shouldn't it say, "They" purchase it?
Might read better if they used the, goes up Route 30, "Using water purchased from CFD One." Might be the way to word that.
Right, it's poorly worded.
Does that make sense? You got that one, Allison?
Yes.
Anything else?
And down to the manager's report, it talks about the salt shed. Shouldn't we call it salt and sand shed, seeing how that's what we've been calling it all along?
Probably shouldn't do that.
And I'm done.
Anyone else?
Oh yeah, I got a lot.
Okay.
You're on, Bob.
Mary Lee carried a lot of it, but under the present, via Zoom, we've got two first names, but no last names. I think that's pretty important. On the top line, it says Lynn, and that's all it says, is Lynn. And then the bottom line, it says, I don't even want to pronounce this, is Anne Marie, A-N-R-E-E, but no last name.
And then that Quinn one, Anne Marie Quinnlin?
I have no idea.
There's no comma between Anne Marie and Quinnlin.
So you're...
I don't see Quinnlin there.
No, further on.
He's two people over there.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Those are the two names, that was that, and then down in the...
Bob?
Oh, go ahead.
That's the way they were listed on Zoom, so we have no idea what the last names were.
Oh, okay, so we don't do nothing about that then?
Well, we could in the future. I think you raise a good point, Bob. So in the future, we'll take the moment to ask the people that are on Zoom that don't have a last name to identify themselves.
Okay.
So I've always been a, I've always found it mildly irritating myself, so.
Under the adopt rules of procedure, I'd like to see, not just say Lakes Region. I'd like to see it Lakes Region free for us. And then same thing with Laundromat, could we put Castleton Laundromat, or whatever it's called?
It's called Lakes Region Laundromat?
It's Lakes Region Laundromat.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about the papers there. Oh.
That's later on.
That's my mistake, thank you. Cross that off. And then that same paragraph, it says, "The only time it may..." Did you cover that? You covered that right there. I get that one? All right, I totally stole my thunder. You covered that one? You covered that one? I bring those up in the slip for concern. Oh, down at the bottom of page three, under bids received for feasibility study, it's just a minor thing, it says, "Mark Brown felt the proposal was much more than they anticipated. It is very involved in much more than what anticipated." I think it suits to say what was anticipated, but I could be wrong there too. More than what was anticipated, maybe? Sound better?
Missed that one.
Just get rid of the "what" altogether and just say, "It's very involved in much more than anticipated."
Would read well. Whatever works, yep. And then, "The discussion about municipal water," four lines from the bottom. M. Cooms stated they are, they are considered municipal water and sewer in town, such as the transfer station, town garage, and beach.
I think the word "our" should be struck and the word "should," that they should, or the town should consider. Let's go with that. That M. Cooms stated that the town should consider municipal water and sewer in town buildings, such as...
The town should consider?
Yeah.
Okay.
In town buildings such as a transfer station, town garage, and beach. I believe that's what she was talking about.
I'm sure. Okay, so I got that thing there. Down at the bottom of that page, right above the purchase orders for approval, it says, "M. Jones thanked the board for allowing the use of funds to complete the emergency operations center and standby generator at Highway Garage." I probably should say, "The Highway Garage." Or "At the Highway Garage."
Yes.
Yep. That's all I got.
You pretty well, anyone else have anything? Rob?
The only thing I had was, I think that the Pledge of Allegiance was led by Mark Brown.
I believe it was. I can also state with confidence that I did not make a motion to approve the minutes. As chairman, I wouldn't have done that.
That I thought was strange, too.
So I don't know who made the motion and who seconded it, but...
Well, it wasn't strange, because we hadn't organized the meeting.
Yeah, we had at that point.
We had at that point?
Yeah. That's the first item of business after the pledge. Is organization of officers.
On here, it says it's after that.
I had asked Mark Brown to do the Pledge of Allegiance, because I opened the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm talking about the minutes.
Okay.
You're right, that Mark Brown led the Pledge of Allegiance, that is correct.
I didn't say that, Rob did.
Rob did. But the...
That says M. Jones.
And the only thing that I had was, I was going to say that the approval of the minutes, I did not make that motion. I don't know who did, but it wasn't me. So if you could review the recording.
It was probably me.
I can't.
But I can't swear to it.
I can't confirm or deny that either. So are we done? All in favor of the minutes as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
That was tough.
Yeah. Okay, citizens' comments and concerns, items not on the agenda. Matt Brown, you go first.
Yep. Matt Brown from Castleton. So I came here a couple weeks ago to ask for an appointment to be Castleton's representative to the D&amp;H Rail Trail Council. It's a council that's forming through V-Trans to just oversee the administration of the rail trail. You guys had asked me to reach out to John Alexander, because he had expressed interest too, so I did. And John said that he would be interested in being an alternate for the rail trail council, but he can't really go to any of the meetings, because they are on the same night as his fire department meetings. So, you know, I think the council has a really good cause, and I don't, nobody else really seems to be going from Castleton, so I would ask if you guys would appoint me to be Castleton's representative with John Alexander as an alternate.
Two questions, Matt. First question, how soon do you need action on this?
Well, our next meeting isn't until next Wednesday, and we're supposed to, like, bring minutes to it, but, I mean, the sooner the better, because our main issue is that we don't have a quorum and can't do anything.
Okay. Question for the parliamentarian, do you think this should be on the agenda before we take official action and we could appoint him as intern tonight? And then put it as an agenda item, just to make sure, we have our i's dotted and our t's crossed?
I don't think as an appointment, it would need to be on the agenda. I think it was brought up earlier.
It was.
And the meeting can't have a quorum without official members, so I think it would behoove the board to act sooner rather than later.
I'm not opposed to that, I just wanted an opinion. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that Matt Brown be the appointee and John Alexander the alternate.
To the D&amp;H Rail Trail...
Council.
Council.
I'll second that.
They're moved in second, and any demarcus discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks, guys.
Anything else, Matt?
No, I will update if there's any new rail trail news for you.
Go make us proud.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. While we're on the subject of rail trail, Matt, was there any discussion in your meetings about the Honore Fleming, the rail trail portion of the rail trail being dedicated to Honore Fleming?
Yeah, and also there's an email chain going on about that, and I think that that's probably gonna, it seems like that's gonna happen. I haven't had a meeting since that's been going around, so I don't know for sure, but I got the email the other day from, I can't think of her first name, Casano, from V-Trans.
Jackie.
Jackie, that's right. So it feels like that will probably happen?
I think I shared it with the select board in the email. You did. So you guys knew what was going on in case it come up.
But, yeah, I'm not really sure right now.
So it's being discussed, though?
Yeah, it is being discussed, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Cool, thanks, guys.
Yep.
You may want to keep Mary Drogi in the list of that.
Okay.
As an employee at the college, earlier on, she had mentioned that there were some folks at the college that were interested in pooling some funds for a plaque.
Yeah.
Put there, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll bring it up at the next meeting, and I'll keep Mary in the loop, too.
Great.
Cool. See you, everybody.
Thanks, Matt.
Good night.
Can I make a remark on that?
Certainly.
I have mixed feelings. One, we can put a monument up to honor her. But on the other side, if you're walking the rail trail, is it a reminder that you might not be safe? You know, I'm looking at it both ways, and I don't know which way to lean. I don't use the rail trail, because I don't happen to walk there, but the people that walk there, is that going to be a constant reminder, there might be someone around the corner with a gun? Just a thought.
Good point.
Look at him think.
Well, you raise a point, and boy, that's a...
It's a toughie.
That's a, yeah, and I'm going to cop out and say that it's not this board's responsibility to make that decision. And that's exactly what it is, is a cop out. Personally, I think that we should honor her, and if the powers that be in charge of that rail trail want to put a plaque or a monument up, then they, I would not stand in their way. That's only my opinion. But I don't believe it's in this board's purview to...
AOT has jurisdiction.
Right.
I'll accept that, but it was just...
And I totally...
And then I went the other way.
So it's respectful, but not bringing up a horrific image.
Agreed.
It also depends on where they put it.
Yes. I mean, not to diminish that tragedy in any way, that was a horrible event, but I don't think that's within our purview to rule on. Okay, citizens' comments, anybody else? Mary, I saw you first. You got to tell us who you are, Mary.
Mary McIntyre, Castleton. I'm here tonight representing Friends of Castleton Parks and Recreation, and mainly just to update you folks on where we're at. So we have created bylaws. This Thursday will be, I believe, our fourth meeting. We've created bylaws, we have a board of directors. Andy Vermilia is the president, I'm the vice president, and then we have Marty Alexander as our treasurer, Lori Kamuta as our secretary, and Anne Marie Quinnlin also as a director. Anne Marie Quinnlin Mac, it's hyphen Mac. Where we've got a lot accomplished, Andy is a huge asset, as far as I'm concerned. He's already got us as a 501(c)(3), which on committees that I've been on before, that's a huge, huge hurdle that we've accomplished in a short amount of time. So that's pretty terrific. The senior center, community, help me out, community, senior center, right?
Castleton Community Center.
Castleton Community Center. They have given up the townwide yard sale, and the town manager, Mike Jones, has kind of thrown it towards maybe the friends might be interested in running with that. There's a little discussion about, is that recreation? But we thought, in the interest of building community, that that was in Friends of Parks and Recreation's realm. So we are going to run with that. We've got a committee formed, and that is planned for June 22nd. We're also, we've had Parks and Recreation Director John Alexander meet with us at our last meeting, so that we could kind of tell him what our scope we were hoping to be, and learn from him what direction and ideas he had and needs he had, that we as a boosters club could work with him on. So that went very well. One of our focus points is to start raising some money to help out with different causes. There's the adventure camp this summer, which is offered to the Castleton kids, and we're hoping to rally the troops pretty quickly to come up with some money to help with the tuition, to lure the tuition in that. Not that it's horrific, but if we can help moms and dads out a little bit in luring their kids, their kids' tuition, it might be a good helping hand to everyone involved. Also, we're hoping, under the lead of Andy, who has experience with this, to have a 5K turkey trot around Thanksgiving. And we'll need to work with the town on that, because we'll need questions answered regarding insurance. And we'll need some police coverage. And, but, and I thought Andy was going to be here tonight. He researched it. It is, I think, the closest Thanksgiving turkey truck is in Woodstock. So... And so there isn't really one around here, so we think it would draw quite a few people. And again, be a good community booster. So, so that's where we're at. Right now, we're meeting once a month as a whole group, but we do meet separately. We're breaking up into work groups, which seems to be working pretty well. And reach out to us if you can think of anything, and hopefully we'll keep this open dialogue with you folks and the Parks and Recreation Director, which so far has been great. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary.
Mary.
Oh, sorry.
You said the meeting was Thursday night, but you didn't have a time or a place.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's going to be at the village school in the home ec room at 6:00.
Okay.
And we try to keep them at one hour.
Okay.
It's not to say that it won't go to, you know, one hour and 10 minutes, but we really try hard to just keep them pretty efficient.
Thanks, Mary.
Mr. Chairman? This is a big question. I reached out to John and let him know that the suspense or the deadline coming up for the coin drops is going to be the second meeting in April.
Just got that email today. And I've emailed the group so that we can get that on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie?
Julie Finnegan, Castleton. So, you'll be so happy to know, we are down to one school board meeting a month, which means once a month, I can join you now and hear what you're doing. I'm so excited, that is something we're able to do now. So we went down, we reorganized, and we're doing one meeting a month. We realized it'll be a long meeting, but we all agreed it allowed all of us to maybe branch out into our towns a little bit and have a little more communication with our local government. So today, I just wanted to share with you guys that we have put forward a new budget with minus $150,000 of costs that do not affect students. After that, we're starting to affect students. So that's where we felt like we landed. And we have an informational vote, April 10th, 6:30 PM, at the high school band room. And the revote is Friday, April 12th, for the new budget. Other than that, if anybody has any specific questions, I've got some new facts from the state. The state goes out and asks school boards to give them their information, so they can see what is needed from the education fund. So there is, there are some new numbers, so I don't know if you want me to share those, I'm more than happy to. But that's up to you guys.
I think we need to keep it brief.
Okay.
We're already behind schedule.
Okay, all right. So I do have some handouts that do have some of the information on there that I can leave for you guys, so people can grab those. Of course, they will be coming in the mail as well, because, you know, that's how we do things. So there's, that's the same thing that will be coming in the mail, but there are some there as well. But just know that the overall number of, it used to be the average was $22,000 per pupil for state, from what they gathered, it's down to 13. So there's been some huge inroads in reducing the education fund, which will hopefully make the yield go up and our taxes go down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The average for the state has gone down?
Yes, so they, when they first asked for the numbers, they said the average that was need, the average per pupil spending was $22,000 per pupil, or a little bit more than that. It is now down to the average is being said at $13,000. So a lot of school budgets have cut their budgets from their kind of taking advantage of the law that passed, and the new law, and they have reduced their budget. So, and the yield is also looking to go up to, we're hoping around $10,000, which will also reduce our taxes more. So we're giving back to the taxpayers a, from 1.17 last year to 1.15 this year for our tax rate from the school district. So we went down two cents.
Nice work.
All right?
Julie.
One more thing, info meeting is April 10th, but I didn't get...
Yes, 6:30.
6:30.
At the high school in the band room.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Where can we find, where can the public that's listening to this find this information?
It's all on our website. You literally go to slatevalleyunified.com, the first thing that pops up is, "Do you want information on the revote?", and you just click on it. So it's all right there. It's the first thing, like, you can't, you have to click out of it to get into the actual school website. So it is all there, and when that comes in the mail, there's a QR code that you can scan too, but it's all right there. Yep.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anybody else, or anybody on Zoom? Any hands up?
Anybody on Zoom have a question for the board, or under the citizens' comments and concerns, not on the agenda?
Okay, we're going to move on. Chief Mantello, you're up.
All right. New faces. Welcome, thank you. All right, everybody get a copy of the February monthly report. Got a couple things I got to go over after this. If you look the comparative calls from January to February, we were down like 22 calls from the month of February. Nothing really stands out. The outreach was the meals that were delivered in February. That's what that, why that number jumped up. Any questions on the service calls, which was...
Just a quick one, chief. Just to make sure everyone is on the same page. The 25% of your calls on average is directed patrols. Could you explain to the new members and myself as well?
Yeah, so the directed patrols are really focused on areas, whether there's high traffic, high pedestrians, so like on Friday and Saturday nights, it'd be closer to Main Street, Elm Street, mechanic. And then throughout the week, it depends on the time of day. It could be over on Creek Road, we're seeing more activity over there. It could be on Drake, there's been a request to do some stationary traffic for speed on certain roads. So the officers are tasked to get those in.
Thank you.
Yep.
I got one question, again.
Yes, sir.
I asked you the last time. But for our new members, and maybe get it clear on me. What is the protocol on the sex offender registry check in regards to notifying the neighbors?
There's nothing that we have to notify the neighbors. So they're public. If you go on the public website for the sex registry, you'll know what town, where they are, where they all live in the entire state. So we're required, we're mandated by state law and federal law to do quarterly checks to make sure they're living there, and they're at the same address. If they don't, if they move without notifying the registry, then it becomes a criminal violation on their part. Which I think, since I've been here, I've arrested one for that. They came from another town, didn't let the registry know, and they moved here.
Question, chief, have you seen any fallout from the reduction in the hotel vouchers in Rutland?
Yeah, and I was going to mention it then, after the report, I kind of go on in some other stuff, so I'll, I will talk about that. Any questions, anything on the calls themselves? on the calls themselves? So for the new members, we, this report comes out. I have Justin kind of get all the numbers on our Velcor CAD system. So we break it down to service calls. Now we go into criminal arrests. In February, we had nine arrests. Nothing really stands out outside of, you know, DUIs have been up this year. So we're seeing, you know, you would think after 50 years of people still wouldn't do that, but they still do. Probably had a lot more, let's see if the accident one up here. Yeah, we've had more accidents this year than we normally would. And the weather, it hasn't been weather related at all. So that's, we usually average anywhere, it depends. In the winter, they drop down a little bit, anywhere from seven to, we've had up to 22 a month. So really, the average is going to be about 10 or 11. They'll pick up in the summertime. Traffic violations, we kind of break down to everything there. So we did go up on, on traffic violations. We're going to see as the weather changes, you're going to see that number go up. Most of it's obviously speed. We still consider, we still issued some parking tickets for the overnight parking and the designated areas. Calls serviced to Castleton in February, we didn't get any calls to the actual on-campus at all. Probably because half the month they were still out. Maybe not. They did have a break. Backup provided by Castle and PD. So this is something that we started about three years ago of assisting officers at night. There's, there's towns that have very minimal coverage. So if the state goes down to Poltonie or to Hubbardan or Fairhaven, sometimes is, has minimal coverage. We assist them also. So as you can see where they were located, two Fairhavens, one in Poltonie. And those are, those aren't just citizen assists. This is where something involving a citizen dispute domestic, you really don't want to send one officer. So it's, it's common to ask for officer assistance from a close by town. So that happens pretty regularly. If it's not an emergency, we don't assist. We talked about the sex offenders for registry. We just did that. So we just did the first quarter, which just happened. I think we have eight in this town. You just got to go to that website, the public portal. It'll tell you where they live and their address. Justin's obviously been working on some grants. He did, he did submit the Department of Homeland Security grant for, for, we're trying to upgrade our radios for 52,000. And it's 100%. We'll see if we get it. Because these radio systems we got, even though they seem new, but they're actually seven years old.
That was my question. They're outdated already.
Yeah.
And what happens to the old stuff?
Well, that's something we're working with the town manager on. I mean, they're expensive units. So, well, we're talking with the town manager on those. We did, I did get the, I did talk to Chief Humphries today about the car. So, so I know. So he said next Tuesday, he will receive the, the check from the town. And so hopefully that'll be out of our dooryard, the 2013 Ford Taurus out there. All right. So update on the, on the homicide information. This has been, people have been asking me this. The Spartans have been asking me. It's been really low key. It's kind of fallen to what we call a cold case right now. They do have one assigned officer that I'm going to try to meet with this week and just trying to see where they're at with it. It's been kind of frustrating. A lot of people ask. I don't know what to tell them outside that there is somebody assigned to us still. And I think they've exhausted, like tips from the reward. Not that many, not that many came in. So I have to make a decision how long I want to keep that reward out. It's other people's money and I don't want to tie it up. So that's something that I'll talk with Mark about at some point because he's, he's kind of in charge of that piece of, on the one side of it. The question that Mark had talked about, yes, we have been dealing with that. We're getting more and more calls. Tonight, before I came in, I was looking on the county and they're getting calls of suspicious people hanging out everywhere, all over the county. We had to kick out two squatters and a local, a local residence just down from the four corners. Found out it was empty somehow, maybe knew the person, don't know. But they were in there. So that's something that I want to put out on my Facebook pages. Really, just be very aware of people around. We finally able, got the full rid of possession, or I should say the owner, the Albright's on Birdseye, the 689, which was been a thorn in our side for three years. People have been living up there off for nothing. And it's been people going up there on all sorts of activities. So there's a new owner. He's from Texas. I spoke with him. He bought the house. He's been up here. He knows what he has to do to, to get it up to speed. So there's, they've already cleaned everything out of there. It was tremendous. So we don't want that. Just remember, the landlord tenant laws apply. If somebody is in a resident more than 30 days, they're considered a renter and you have to be victims legally. Even the state, when they have these hotels, you got to understand, even the, not the, not the hotels with the Cortina, but when they have probation area where people get out of jail, they have certain hotel rooms, they have areas where they'll put them for a couple of weeks. Every two weeks, they have to get out of that weekend and move out. Breaks the 30-day cycle. They come back in Monday. So even the state does that. So that's something you have to be aware of if you're renting. It's so critical now. Warm weather, we're going to get, they're going to, they're going to, people are going to be coming. We just have to be more alert on it. Not trying to scare anybody. I'm just saying. They're, they're, they're filtering. Just the other day, we, there was four or five people that walked that dropped off the bus. We didn't know any of them. So, that answer your question, Mark?
It does, yeah, unfortunately.
So we just...
Really using any recourse you have, right? I mean, it's not, it'd be a vagrant.
I mean, yeah, I know. So that's the thing is the trespass issues, unlawful mischief. You know, really, I don't want them to get hunkered down. I do know, I do, we do keep track of, there are vacant houses in this community. Not the ones on the lake. There's other ones on a major roads that I keep an eye on. If I see anything that's amiss, we don't want them, I should say, I shouldn't say it like that. We don't want people to be in there for more than, you know, because then it just becomes, well, it turns into another Birdseye incident. And that wasn't enough. Just ask the community members that lived on that road. They'll tell you. Last thing I wanted to cover was this whole thing on the speed cards. I know Rob and Mark were here when I first handed out those estimates in quotes for the speed card. So I don't know if, Dick, did you tell them kind of like where we were at with this at all?
I have not.
So what happened was the board chair had asked me months ago, six months ago, I don't know, maybe longer. We were talking about putting speed cards, permanent ones, solar charged, something on 30 North, 30 South, 4A West and 4A East. Everybody would come in, they would know the speed limits. We didn't really talk an exact location, but we really liked the ones. I'm seeing all different types of ones out there. Actually, Justin and I were just talking about this morning on these, these quotes. So in reference to the grant, that's a little daunting. Anything from Department of Transportation from the government is a very daunting grant. And I, I printed this out. I looked at it. They've got, their planning application and demonstration grant application has to be in by next week on April 4th. We're not going to make that. And then there's a implementation grant application, which is the implementation piece, is due by May 16th. So it's like, it's got three phases on this grant. This is something that even Justin, who does most of my grants, he's like, this is, I mean, this is just the instructions. It's like 40 pages. So it looks like we're not going to meet that one. That was an 80/20. I did try to make contact with one of the grant supervisors, the coordinators for this. I emailed him. I had not heard anything back yet. Tried calling them, see if I can get some guidance on this and see what we really can do to push this. So the NHTSA grant is, we can't use because they already use it for governor's highway safety. That's actually issued to the state and then it's issued to each of the coordinators that control that part throughout the state. There was one other one that I don't think, I don't remember the name of it.
Was it the 50% one?
Yeah. So even if we got 80/20, I kind of broke down the tip. The ones that we talked about, the one in West Rottlin is a Decatur. So the Decatur actually was the cheapest one of the bunch. It's about 19,000, 20% of that's like 3,800. The highest one was the custom, that's 25. So that's, that's 5,000 would be the, if, if, if we had a grant, that was an 80/20. That just kind of tells you what it's going, what it would cost. Now, installation, that's a whole different game. And we would have to do that.
And if it's in, on a state highway, we got to get permission from the state.
Yeah, that's right. That, that's another issue that we'd have to contend with.
Route 30, north, south and west.
Yeah, four of them.
So the village is on state highway, but it's our, we control that one.
So that's the only place we could do it. I mean, without having to get a permit would be if you just put it on the village line.
South Street, North Road.
No, no, I'm talking south.
Train station?
Huh? Yeah, somewhere around there, that area. No, but I was talking Route 30. There's nowhere that's, you know, that's all state. And then everything over here is all state. West of the...
It's possible. It's just one more hoop to jump through.
I know. I'm not saying it's not possible. I'm just kind of giving you an update, kind of what, what we're, what we're trying to figure out. Quotes aren't going to change.
And Mark, are you up to speed on what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Similar to the sign going into West Rottlin or the one going into Fairhaven? And they're roughly 20 to 25 K a pop, right?
Wow, they're four, they're about anywhere from 35 to 4,000 or 5,000 per unit. We want four of them.
Okay.
So the cheapest, or the, the lease quote was, was the almost 19,000, 18,955. That was, and they, they got those at 4,500 apiece. The custom was the 25,000 for four of them. They're, and then stalker was just over 19,600.
I misunderstood you because I was thinking 5K a pop approximately. And when you said 25, I'm thinking, must be I remembered wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, our share was 5,000.
So you basically pay for one and get three.
That was for four. So they're roughly 5K a pop in round numbers.
And, you know, all these towns are getting them. It's something that we talked about. It's just, it's just all, it comes down all about money. Just comes down to, to, you know, to get them.
But they seem pretty effective.
Yeah.
They do work, I think.
When it was off, people's foot goes to their brake, even if they're not speeding.
And, and, and these, and one of these, I think this one has the, has the light flash, which actually really gets people going. They see a light blinking at them.
Woodstock has one like that.
Yeah, that one. Yeah, that's a blue light almost.
Yeah. What, what, what does the Woodstock, what category does that fall under?
Well, what do you think?
Probably the 25,000.
Yeah.
You can't afford this, Mr. Spaulding.
I can't afford not to put my foot in the brake.
The question I would have to the select board is, because this isn't something we budget for. So if, if, if Chief and his, and Justin go through the process of filing for this grant and we're awarded it, and we don't have the 20% or some of these grants are 50% dedicated to that, then it just seems like a real wasted effort for, as you saw how tedious one of those grants can be, is discussion of where, how you pay for it.
Well, I can't speak for the whole board, but if, if they got a grant for, for four of those, I think we would have to put some effort into figuring out how to fund the 20%. Absolutely.
Yeah, it's not that much money.
And it's, public safety should be one of our priorities.
Yep.
And they do work. They work on me. I know they work.
They work on me. And I'm a police officer.
And you're from Woodstock, too.
Oh, I remember that. Speaking of the, and I want to say, I want to say this as a, and maybe I should talk to Mary about it, but the turkey trot, because I worked over there and they did that. It was huge. It got, it got huge really fast. We're talking hundreds and hundreds of people. Like into the last one, I think they had like over 1,000. And it's usually done on the morning of Thanksgiving, like early, like 8, 9 o'clock in the morning. So just, if that's something that, which I'm not against, totally support any kind of events, but what would the route be? How long would it be and so on? You don't want it too long and you don't want it too short.
We definitely...
Oh, there you are, Mary.
Yeah, I'm right here.
Okay.
We definitely banked it.
Yeah. So...
Well, it's, it's 5K, Peter.
So that's 3.3 point, what, two miles?
3.2.
3.1.
You knew it.
3.1.
I barely stand corrected.
Hey, any other questions or comments on the...
I'm all set. Is the board all set?
I, I, go ahead, Mike. I'll be here. I just, real quick, the revenue, the 11,007, how does that compare to like last year? Is it up or down or about the same or?
Oh, you mean the...
Police department revenue for the...
Oh, for the, from the tickets?
Is that what it's from the tickets? Yeah.
Oh, no, from everything? I haven't looked at what comparatively what it was. Don't forget, this is, so this is since July. So what do we got, three more months left? I think, I think last year we were, we were up.
Were you?
Yeah. I, I believe. I'd have to look at it.
Yeah, I just curious.
Yeah.
Mike?
I have a couple of things, sorry. But I did ask the chief to do a traffic, contact the state about a traffic study for this. I'm getting lots of complaints about people speeding from basically the medical center down to Hubbardan Forge. And we had a fatal there last, last fall.
October.
With the corners. And I think it'd be worth having the traffic study to reduce the 40 mile an hour speed limit through this area because there's a lot of driveways between that, that medical center, the health center to the corners.
See, yeah, so I did, I did email Ian. I haven't heard back from him in reference to that. Kind of gave him a short synopsis of what we're looking for because I'd like to, I'd like to see that area, that 40, drop down to 30. 10, 10 down. You go in...
Extending it up to the school.
What's that?
What about extending it up to the school?
Oh, no. You mean, once, once you're, no, I don't think so. I think, because the school's up, I know they're turning in there. Once they get by the underpass, it changes. I don't know if they would allow to keep that 30 all the way up. That's just my...
It's the hot rods coming out the highway. And they still think they're on the interstate.
Going down.
Coming this way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I did get, I did email Ian. So we'll see what he got.
And then there, I can follow up. We, we have some reports from our employees that they just recently found drug paraphernalia and behind one of our pump stations.
Okay.
I'll follow up Ian on that one.
Yep.
And some booze bottles still being found behind the village school.
Okay.
And I don't think we have any statutes on panhandling, but I did see someone at the corners the other day, camped out. They weren't actually out there with a sign, but if that could be part of this migration of, of people, we might have to look at something like that. But Chief and I are, we had the traffic ordinance. It was all we had was a 1987.
1979, yeah.
Traffic ordinance in a hand typed format. So it's been put in electronic format so we can review it. Because we're going to have to come back to the select board with, with the new version. That includes all the changes that have happened since 1978. So...
Yeah, that's one thing that people always ask me in all the ordinances. I know that Mike's done a good job of trying to get them all online, but we really need to get, I know that we've got not all of them, but we need to get more of them put on there because people, you know, just don't know where to look.
That and they haven't been reviewed or updated.
Correct. Yeah, I mean...
Since decades.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Anything else, Chief?
I got one more.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I was going to ask you, with select board concerns, but I'm going to ask you, I went by this generator down to the substation down by Route 4A, the railroad tracks, you know what I'm talking?
Yeah.
Gutter's building. And the doors were open on all the generators, the front door.
Joe Mark brought that up. It's because it's on an automatic switch and it, it's enclosed and it overheats.
So it's something we did?
Yes.
No, yeah, yeah.
Nobody's messing with it.
Correct.
Okay, okay. That's, I got that out of the way.
All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Let's talk about the, uh, Bridge Nine on Route four A.
Who's up?
Laura.
Laura? Ahead of us.
Or me at least.
She's magic, that's why.
So I know you guys are behind schedule. I'll try to talk really, really fast and then you can just slow me down if you need me to. I'm Laura Stone with V-Trans. This is the regional concerns meeting for Bridge Nine on Vermont Route four A. Uh, we also have Adam Goudreau here tonight. He's the V-Trans Design Project Manager in the back there. Stephen Coley, he's the Lead Design Engineer right here. So the purpose of the meeting, we want to provide an understanding of our approach to the project, talk about the project constraints, um, discuss our selected alternative, how we want to proceed with this project and provide an opportunity to ask questions and voice concerns. I have that bottom there, but feel free to just interrupt me at any time. So here's a location map of the culvert is located on four A, right there, and an aerial view. So as you can see, there really is no stream or brook here. This is almost a, um, it's, it's a drainage ditch that goes along the four A on the northern side. Um, so meeting overview, I'm going to talk about our project development process briefly, just to give you an idea where we are. Again, we'll give a project overview, talk about the existing conditions of the culvert, the alternatives we considered in our scoping report, um, our selected alternative, including maintenance of traffic. So how are we going to maintain traffic during this project? Schedule, so when you can expect to see this in construction, uh, summary, and again, questions at the bottom, but I'm happy to take questions anytime. So here's the V-Trans project development process and this slide is really just to show you that we're at a really, really early stage of project development. A project's been funded and we're in this, we're in this stage called project definition. This is where we identify the environmental resources, the cultural resources, look at the constraints surrounding the structure. We evaluate alternatives, which the end product of that is a scoping report. We have this participation, public participation piece, which is where we are right now. And ultimately, we really want to build consensus towards, towards our selected alternative. After this, uh, after this meeting, that's when we're considered project, the project to be defined. That's when we're going to go into project design, do the environmental permitting, the right of way process if needed, um, develop the plans, the estimates, specifica, and specifications. Uh, after project design, that's when we will award a contract and the project will move into construction. So really, we're at this really, really early stage. So this is when we want to hear the input from the town in case there's any input that needs to, needs to be, uh, addressed during design. So here's a picture looking west over the culvert. It is classified, the road is classified as a rural major collector. It is a six-foot span reinforced concrete box owned by the state of Vermont. So there's no town funds involved. Twenty percent state funded, eighty percent federally funded. And the box was constructed in nineteen twenty-seven. Here's a picture looking east over the culvert. There are aerial utilities, um, owned by Green Mountain Power, Comcast and Consolidated Communications and First Light Fiber. Um, it is anticipated that overhead utilities will be, will need to be relocated for replacement of the culvert. So existing site deficiencies, the culvert is in poor condition and I have some pictures of that coming up. Uh, delaminations and cracks are throughout the culvert. That really just means this concrete culvert has concrete, which is kind of falling off and peeling off of the culvert. Um, the existing culvert does not meet the calculated or measured bank full width and so currently we have a six-foot span culvert and what hydraulic says we need here is an eight-foot span culvert. Um, again, it does not meet the headwater depth for design or the check storm. And during the check storm, this is a hydraulic term, uh, the roadway is calculated to be overtopped. I don't know if the town has ever observed overtopping here, but that is what our, uh, our calculations are showing. Uh, the stream is intermittent, flashy and laden with sediment. I know there, the district has to go out there at least two times a year to clear sediment from this culvert. Again, that's just another, uh, just another, it's indicative that this is undersized. Um, the stream channel has curves at the inlet and outlet and these cause slowing of the stream and deposition of sediment within the downs, within and downstream of the culvert. Um, so there's all this sediment buildup in the culvert and that's reducing the capacity that, that it can carry flow. And the shoulder width over the culvert is currently two feet and per standards in an area with guardrail, it should be four feet. So the width over the culvert is substandard as well. So here's a picture. This is if you're, you're inside the box here, looking at the top of the culvert. You can see there's a lot of exposed reinforcing steel here. Again, the culvert rating is a four. It's in poor condition. The channel is rated a six satisfactory condition. This is looking at the outlet of the culvert. So, um, this is really showing the drainage ditch. It takes a ninety degree turn. So it comes out of the culvert and it's really going towards the bottom of the page here. So that's causing a lot of issues with, um, with debris buildup. And here's a picture looking downstream. So the roadway embankment is right here. And again, it's just, it's, this is dry a lot of the times and it's really a roadway ditch. And a picture looking upstream. This is when some flow is, is flowing. Um, I'll point out this house here that is, um, eligible for listing on the historic register. There's a picture of the inlet. Some more pictures of the box. And I'll just flip through these really quickly. You can see a lot of rust staining in here. There's some cracking throughout. Again, more cracking, rust staining. So existing resources, the project is within the northern Longyear habitat range. Really, that just means if we want to cut any trees, uh, we're limited when we can cut those trees. Um, this is within a high priority area for wildlife habitat, but there's a natural barrier within a hundred feet of the structure. Um, so we're, it's not really a consideration for this project. Uh, the field to the north of the existing structure is archaeologically sensitive. Um, again, the, the culvert is not historic, but the structure to the southwest is a national, is a national register eligible house listed in the Vermont State Register. Uh, the soil surrounding the culvert is considered prime agricultural soil. And also to point out here, Vermont Route four A is a moderate use bicycle corridor and it is used by public transit. So here's the existing conditions layout. This is a picture, like if you're a, it's a bird's eye view. So if you're flying above the culvert looking down, the culvert is located right here. This brown section here, that's the roadway. Um, I guess I'll point out here, there's a, these red lines here, that is the state owned right of way. So there is quite a bit of rights, um, rights in the area. You can see these, this ECT line right here, that is the aerial utilities. You can see they cross right over the culvert here and that's why, um, why a aerial utility relocation is going to be required. Design criteria and considerations. There's an average daily traffic of, uh, two thousand one hundred and fifty vehicles per day. A design hourly volume. So design hourly volume is the amount of traffic you would expect to see in your peak hour of traffic. So that is two hundred and fifty vehicles per hour, percent trucks of five point one and a design speed of fifty miles per hour. So here's the alternatives we considered in the scoping report. Um, just due to the amount of deterioration of this box, we did not consider a rehabilitation here. We really looked at, uh, two different replacement options. One is a full bridge replacement with a concrete box culvert on alignment. So that's in its existing location. Um, a new box would have an eight-foot minimum span to meet the minimum hydraulics here. We would widen the shoulders over the box to meet that, uh, eleven-foot, four-foot typical section. So that's, uh, eleven, two eleven-foot travel lanes with four-foot shoulders on either side. And either option on alignment or off alignment will have a seventy-five year design life. Um, the off alignment option, and I'm just going to click to the next page to show you, I'm going to click two pages down. The off alignment option here, as you can see, shifts this culvert over here. So like I said, on the outlet end, this, this stream takes a hard right, which is causing a lot of sedimentation buildup. So what our hydraulics unit has recommended is to realign this culvert so it's not, it's not, uh, causing sediment issues at the outlet end. So our selected alternative here is to replace the existing culvert with a new precast box, uh, off alignment. Again, eight-foot minimum span. The new channel alignment is recommended, uh, by hydraulics to reduce sediment deposition. Um, minimum hydraulic standard and bankful width conditions will be met. Uh, again, we're going to widen the shoulders to that minimum, uh, standard of four feet and construct head walls that extend four feet below the channel bottom to prevent undermining. So really, uh, what everybody here is concerned about is maintenance of traffic. So how are we going to maintain traffic during, during replacement of this culvert? So we looked at three options. We looked at an off-site detour that would be closing the road during construction while we, while we replace the culvert. Phased construction involves maintaining traffic over part of the existing culvert while we replace the other portion and then shifting traffic over. It does allow the road to stay open during construction, but with reduced lane widths and a really long construction season. Uh, we also looked at a temporary bridge, um, a temporary bridge on either side would have limits outside the right of way and would have impacts to utilities and environmental and cultural resources. So really what we want to do here is do sort of a hybrid option between a road closure and phased construction. Uh, so we, we are proposing a short-term weekend closure with phased construction following of one phase with one lane of alternating traffic with a traffic signal. So what that looks like is this, we would close the road for a weekend while we get as much of the box constructed as possible, enough to open up one lane of traffic here. And then while, while we are maintaining one lane of alternating traffic, the inlet and outlet end could be constructed. Uh, this is what we're thinking. There's a couple other options on the table. Um, if we were allowed a five-day road closure, we believe we could get this entire, this entire culvert constructed and not have to have a long duration of one lane alternating traffic. That's something for the town to think about and consider. Um, we can talk about during, uh, during the comment, question and comments. Uh, so the road closure, the detour would be signed, chosen and signed by the state. Uh, and the shortest detour route is fourteen point six miles end to end. So if that, that's like if you're going from one end of the culvert all the way around the detour to the other end of the culvert. Um, this is the detour route right, right here. It is US four between exits five and exit six. Um, again, if you're going from one end of the culvert all the way around, it is fourteen point six miles. Uh, currently we have this in our budget for the summer of twenty twenty-seven. Uh, it's possible based on, um, based on permitting, uh, utilities that could be moved out a year, but we do try to keep that within a year. There's a total cost estimate of one point three million for this project. Um, and this is the project summary. A lot of it is just repeat from the last slides, but we are recommending, proposing that we replace this existing culvert with a new eight-foot span culvert off alignment while maintaining tra, maintaining traffic with a combination of a short-term closure and phased construction. Um, the recommended traffic control, uh, recommended traffic control is a weekend closure. I say weekend there, but if, uh, midweek closure works better for the town, that's something that we can work with you on. Closure duration, closure timing. I don't know if traffic is seasonal through this area. Um, that's all stuff that we can think about with a road closure. Um, and then again, after a road closure, uh, signalized, single lane road opened up to complete the remaining installation. Um, it's possible that a second short closure might be needed to remove the existing culvert. Um, that's to be determined in design and that wouldn't be a full weekend. That would really be close the road down, rip the culvert out and put the fill back in, um, probably a day. Um, and I guess before I open it to questions and comments, I'll mention up here, there is a website at the top here. The town has a copy of this website. This presentation is going to be up at that website. It is a public facing site. All future plans submitted, so conceptual plans, preliminary plans, any future presentations will be put up at that website so the, the public can follow the life of the project. Okay, I'll open it up to questions and comments.
Two for starters.
Sure.
So the project number would be two, three, B, zero, two, eight?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so you mentioned a couple of possible scenarios for closing. One would be closing for a weekend. The other, you said something about a five-day closure. Now what would that do for improved traffic flow on both ends of the five-day closure?
So the benefit with going with a five-day closure is we could get that whole box in and you're just going to have construction in that area for a much less, less amount of time. So the road will be closed for a couple days longer, um, but there won't be that one, that one-way alternating which can last, you know, it can last months in that condition.
Okay. And is total closure for the life of the project an option or is that, not that I really want to consider that, but I wanted to make sure we asked the question. And what would that do for us? Is it like, could it be done in a week or ten days if it was just shut down for a period of time and then you did the job and then you leave? New pavement, new guardrails, done.
Yeah, so why don't I let Stephen answer that?
He's shaking his head, yeah, so.
So that, that is an option.
Can you step to the microphone, please, so the people on Zoom can hear you as well?
So that is an option. Um, so I'm Stephen Coley. I'm working structures. I also work in construction as a resident engineer on projects. So we have done full closures with a weekend closure. I would see them getting the box installed as much as they can. And then they'd install traffic lights and you'd have alternating traffic. And then that could drag on depending on how many guys they have on site. You typically contract completion date could be far and it could be months before they fully finish. With extending the closure, we can write in our contract that guardrail needs to be up, paving needs to be done, line striping needs to be done. So like, all this stuff needs to be done. All that would be left would be typically topsoiling and seed and grass seed. And that they can do in a couple days. So it's, it's a scale. We think five-day closure will allow them to install the culvert under the road and hopefully install pavement and guardrail. But then there'd be channel work that they may have to do or guardrail aggregate shoulders, you know, various stuff. So it would still be there for a couple weeks after the closure, just tidying everything up. And they'd probably be there for a couple of weeks before the closure, prepping the site for actual the closure duration.
So in those instances, you'd be have it down to one lane with traffic control for a period of time during a workday.
Right.
Shut down for more or less five days. And then they would be able to reestablish two-way traffic unless somebody was working there.
Right. It would be primarily two-way traffic with one lane traffic control during the day as needed. And contractors don't necessarily want to be in the road any longer than they need to.
Understood. So how much influence does the town have on what decision is made on this?
I, does the town have a preference?
Not at this point. We're, we're just learning what the options are.
Yeah, I would say, um, the town definitely has influence, whether we do a shortened closure with phased construction or a longer, a longer closure and get it over with. The town definitely has influence and say over that.
Okay, so how soon would we need to start influencing that if we chose to?
Sooner the better. Yeah. Um, I, I, I would like to know within a month, um, thirty days, maybe it's something you can put on your next select board agenda or?
That's reasonable.
Two agendas from now?
Yeah, I just. I just don't, I don't think we should make that decision tonight, but we should at least start to, you know, think about it and make a decision. So can we put that on the agenda for next meeting?
You are.
Doesn't have to be a long discussion, but I think if, you know, what, what public isn't aware of this tonight should be, can be made aware. And then if they have a preference, they can let us know. We also need to get our emergency response people involved.
Yep. Gotcha.
Can you give us a little sliding scale as to if it's closed this weekend, how long the construction is going to be? If it's closed during the week, seven days, say, how long the construction is going to be? If we totally close it for, say, 14 days, do you get the, does the construction period come down to like this? I want to see a, a laid-out schedule.
Sure. Yep.
If you can do that for us.
Yep, we can give you, it'll be rough, but yeah, we can give you, yep.
Well, hip shot's better than nothing at all.
Yep.
Um, I'll say, anybody else have questions?
Fine.
I'm going to open it up to the audience. You, sir, could you enter, come up to the podium and tell us who you are, please?
Eric Nelson and I've been inside the culvert too.
I just had a question about.
Just so that our recording secretary has it. Your name is Eric Nelson?
Right.
Okay.
No, I just had a question of what they, I know even my wife was saying they should slant that because it hits that, that other end and it's a lot of erosion in there and whatever. What do they plan to do upstream from that? Because I, there was a diagram up there of, of the culvert and the, the piece of land. I mean, there was a blue stretch there or a blue.
She's going to bring it up for you, Eric.
Yeah, right there. I don't, I'm trying to think of where our house is.
It's over there.
Over there is great.
It's to the left.
Yeah, so your house is right here.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah.
And so this is really just channel work. It's, you know, the channel goes right here, right now. And so there would be a little bit of ditching just to match the old channel to the new channel.
Right.
Yep.
And the original channel would be built in.
Not a problem. By the way, just for, do you know that Castleton Creek runs up that, that ditch on the road? Don't you know that trout came up there that far?
I find that plausible.
Amazing.
Under the bridge and up.
Yeah, we even, we even transplanted one. We found one that was stranded up there, netted it, put it in the same temperature water and put it back in the stream.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Thank you for that, yeah. Absolutely. It may not matter to the world, but it sure matters to that trout.
Yeah, I was going to say.
That's illegal.
I fish, I know.
But it did matter to the trout.
You'll lose your license for that. Does this have to have the aquatic passages in it or just, is it just a, no?
This is non-jurisdictional, so it doesn't have to. You know, we're going to be meeting bankful width here. If it's determined later on that we need to have baffles with a stone fill, something that could be added in design pretty easily. But, I mean, typically for aquatic passage, we just, we need to meet that bankful width. And then it involves just some sills, you know, eight-foot increments throughout the culvert. Yep.
I'm all set. Is the board all set? Anybody else in the?
I'm alive.
I need you to come up here so everyone can hear you.
She's the one that said that she was afraid that she, when she drives her car over, it's going to collapse.
We had cars on our front lawn.
Can you please come to the podium?
The person who panicked.
I'm just wondering about, I did want you to move it and I'm glad you thought about moving it over because it does dead-end into, and then just backs up until we've had the entire culvert filled in with rock. You could walk across without any problem. So when it does get going, it does get going. And it has been known to go over the street. Gets high enough on our property to then go over the street. Thank God it does. So I'm just concerned about whether what you do here is going to influence what happens behind our house. When we had, after one of the big storms that went through and we got something like four inches of rain in one evening, I was hearing noise, thinking it was coming from my upstairs, in the house. It was coming from outside. And all these rocks were coming down and they filled the entire thing up. And we had to have somebody come in at our expense and redo that stream bed and put in new rock. And we were told that the state had authority over, we had to, we had to tell the state, or the state had to tell us, I guess, what we could put there and what we couldn't put there. And we've also had people from the Fish and Game come concerned about fish coming up here. I remember that one fellow was there. So I'm concerned about what happens to us once, once you do what you do down, then on there, how does it affect us? Because there is.
It's a wider box too.
I know, I know.
It should improve it. And so instead of having, you know, it's essentially right now, it's acting as a dam.
Oh, I know, I know. It is. We know where it puts.
Backwaters to your house.
Yes, it does.
So hopefully with this new, the idea is that with this, with this new design, it won't dam up like that. There won't be, there won't be sediment, there won't be debris getting stuck in it. And so that won't, that won't dam up and make it to your house.
So essentially what happens is when the water's coming down, it's got all this soil and silt and rocks in it.
Right, it's picking up.
It's carrying it.
Yes, I know.
The minute it hits that, the speed of that water drops.
It's dead-end, right, right.
So it drops all that. By realigning it like this, the hope is the speed of the water will still keep most of it. It won't slow down. So it'll carry all that sediment and sand down, which won't fill up the culvert. And we're also making it wider and taller, so the overall capacity of the culvert is much greater than what's there now.
I know what it's doing right now is the, the section directly behind our house where it curves around. It's eating into that hillside where, which is treed, all trees behind our house. And so I have visions of, you know, like, trees coming down, whatever, into my culvert, you know, and so I'm just asking, are there specific kinds of rock you have to put in? They told us that there was.
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's on our spec book and it, so the spec book is very clear on what's allowed in a channel bottom, what's allowed in the side.
Like the sides, yeah.
Then our river management folks will tell us whether or not we need something special. So that's, that's all in, built into the design and the construction process that not necessarily isn't my part, but in a separate part of the agency.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Mrs. Nelson, would you, would you give your information to these folks and if you have questions, they can get ahold of you or you can get ahold of them?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, that would be great. Or I can give you a card if that. Typically for slow farmering, the bigger the better.
Yeah.
I'm all set. Is the rest of the board set?
I'm good.
I think we're all set, Laura. Thank you very much for your time and helping us out here.
Great, thank you.
Just one more question, right, one quick question?
Yep.
Why does a project like this have to be wait three or four or five years? What, what, what is the holdup on that?
So the holdup is it's, there's federal monies involved and so we need to go through a certain permitting process. You know, there's a historic property close by. It's, it's just, it's the process, it's the right-of-way process, it's the utility relocations. Yeah.
It's not your fault, but I see you as playing Russian roulette with all these extraordinary storms you're having. We're just asking for trouble there. We're asking for trouble.
And, and that's kind of where the design side of things won't really take too long. We've got it down pretty good now, where if something happens, it can be fast-tracked.
Okay.
Design's the easy part.
Design is the easy part. It's the permitting and the, the red tape.
Okay.
Once disasters happen, that kind of, the red tape disappears a lot.
Sports match.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just a comment, Bob. You know, we, we joke sometimes about things moving at the speed of town. That's way faster than the speed of state or the speed of federal government. He just slammed you, Laura. I don't know if you knew that, but he. No, I wasn't trying to slam you. It's just a statement. I'm slamming us because we move at the speed of town and that's too slow for me sometimes. All right, so I think we're set. Thank you very much, everybody. Let's move on to short-term rental policy. So Mark, you asked for this discussion, so I'm going to let you kick it off.
Okay, so I wanted the board to do, as Mike would say, a drive-by on short-term rentals. You know, I think this board is really pro-business, pro-economic development and recognizes the importance of short-term rentals in our community, the importance of tourism in our community. You know, we can't overstate that. But at the same time, before we experience some of the issues that other communities have had, I think we should take a look at this. You know, Killington is kind of an extreme because they're completely a tourist town and they've had situations where in what appeared to be a residential neighborhood, there would be an absentee owner who was utilizing their house for short-term rentals and a two-bedroom house was occupied by 18 rowdy young people. And for the neighbors, that wasn't very tolerable. And it probably wasn't safe for the guests. So I think that we're looking at first and foremost is everyone's safety. And most of the short-term rental agreements, I really like the Rutland Town agreement. For most of them, they look at occupancy rates of two people per bedroom and a couple other safety standards be met. They require the state fire marshal to do an inspection and determine the occupancy rate. So if there's a house up on the lake that in January, when the fire department goes to, they may think is a vacant home because it's seasonal, turns out there's actually eight people there, that the police department, EMS, fire would understand that this was a rental home. Does that make sense? And then I think it's really important that we preserve the character of our residential neighborhoods. What I stated the issue was in Killington. I think everyone that lives in a residential area deserves to have the quiet that's expected there. And I'm not saying that short-term rentals necessarily cause problems, but there's the potential to if there's not some regulation there. It also takes long-term rentals off the market. And our community, like every community in the state, does not have enough residential housing inventory. Businesses in town, the medical center, struggle to hire because there's no place for folks to live. So Mike put together quite a few drafts here. He had some housing data that shows there's upward of 70 entire homes in the town of Castleton that are listed for short-term rentals currently, probably a lot more than any of us expected. And, and again, EMS isn't sure what to expect when they get there and the neighbors may I like in, in Rutland Town's ordinance, they list the purpose of it. The town of Rutland's regulating short-term rentals to reduce or eliminate negative secondary effects it may have on residential areas. Adverse impacts may be noticed in parking, garbage, noise, outdoor nighttime activities. These conditions left unregulated could injure and degrade the community and constitute a public nuisance for its residents. So the purpose is to promote the public health, safety and welfare of the town, its residents and visitors, to balance the desire of property owners to rent their residential properties to short-term guests, with the desire of residents to preserve the traditional peace and quiet of their residential neighborhoods, to preserve and protect residential neighborhood character and livability from the impacts that are often associated with short-term rentals, to limit or prevent long-term rentals from being replaced with short-term rentals, to ensure the safety of occupants of short-term rentals and the well-being of the community/neighborhood, to preserve the character of the neighborhood. Guests shall not have an adverse effect on the character of the neighborhood the property is located in. I think, you know, several towns in Vermont have adopted these regulations. I think Rutland Town is the newest. Is that right, Mike?
Yeah, by their date on their ordinance.
So I think it's been refined a little bit and I think theirs is a really good draft. Again, the intention would not be at all to stop short-term rentals. I think that they're important for our community, but like everything else, it's important that they're managed correctly. So this is a bigger discussion than we're going to, we're not going to sit and approve an ordinance, write an ordinance tonight, but I think it deserves consideration before it's a problem.
I agree with virtually everything you said. And when I went through the three different drafts that were included in our packet, I had to, I had to agree and admit that I liked Rutland the best. There's still some fleshing out to do in their ordinance, but I'm wondering, is there any reason why? Is, does VLCT have a template that we can plagiarize, Mike? Do you know?
I, I don't know. That's something I'll make a note on. They have a policy for just about everything now, so.
And that would be a place to start and then if we could get permission from Rutland to plagiarize theirs, that would be.
One of the members on Rutland Town's attorney, and I imagine that he has vetted this carefully, you know, if you read it, they even start with the authority that they have to enact this ordinance. And they cover some of the things we talked about, that they have an annual registration, they require photographic evidence that you have a certificate of occupancy from the fire inspector, number of occupants that are allowed to stay in there, the state, your state tax papers, because this is a business and, and you should be paying tax to the state. And if it's absentee owner, there has to be a property manager within a 30-minute drive in case there's a problem.
Well, I can tell you a few times when, when you were there too, Mark, where you're trying to gain access to buildings where there's nobody and no manager. Fortunately, in most cases, they were vacant, so the only exposure was property and no life exposure. But there could be life exposure here.
There could be life exposure and even for the safety of these occupants, if someone comes here and rents a short-term rental and the heat goes out in the middle of the night, is there someone that they can call that's going to respond to that?
Yeah.
You know, we need to be concerned about the safety of those folks as well.
Now, maybe I didn't look at this close enough, but is there any, in any of these ordinances, was there any sort of a cap or a limit on the percentage of total households or the percentage of residential properties that could be converted to short-term rentals? And should we even have that conversation?
I haven't seen that in anything that I've read through.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I know that statewide right now, the number I've seen is 3%. If you can imagine, that's pretty high. Morrisville is 9% because of their proximity to Stowe. And that's become, you know, almost 10% of their housing stock is not available for residential living. And that's becoming a problem.
I remember going through an exercise on something else a few years ago, and I think the number of households in Castleton is 1,800-ish, somewhere in the 1,800 range. And jump in if anybody has any better memory of this. So just some quick pea-brain math, there was 70 properties already short-term rentals. We could be at 3% to 5% now.
And that's full, that 70 is full, full-home rentals. On top of that, you know, there are probably some, you know, folks that are renting out their kids' bedrooms or something like that, you know, less than whole-home rentals. So I, you know, it's a significant number.
Do you want to know the one that caught me off-guard when I was looking up short-term rentals in Castleton here? The Texaco Station in town. That has an Airbnb in it now.
That's been reported.
Yeah, but that was just, you know, I would have never thought it.
And you know, that's probably a perfect location for it.
Yeah.
You know, it's in a commercial location. If it was the house right behind yours and there was the Castleton University hockey team from three years ago renting it for a homecoming, it might not be the appropriate place for it.
Actually, we had. Actually, we had college rentals there for one year, and it was, I spent one night keeping people off my lawn because they were parking everywhere, including in my driveway and in my lawn and in my garden. So, I had to be the, I had to be the bad guy there.
But that, the former Bombazine Inn has short-term rentals. They seem to do a great job with it.
Yeah. So, I'm not saying that we should, you know, I'm just wondering if there's some sort of a cap we should entertain, that's all. It's a food for thought at this point.
I would like to see that. You know, in a perfect world, every home in Castleton would have a nice, young family purchase it. Sadly, those days are passing us by, and one of the reasons is that we have a lot of absentee owner landlords. It's not the best thing for the community.
With, from the, from the public safety standpoint, because we don't have a building inspector, and we don't work closely with the Division of Fire Safety for inspections, when we go to some of these homes, and Heath is on, he can attest that we find all kinds of violations that are really, truly life-safety violations, like not working smoke detectors, and we find out when we investigate this, they're out-of-state or absentee homeowners that they're just getting a dollar off this thing, and they're not here to see it through to the end with making sure things are safe. And so, food for thought for the select board is, Jim Leamy is gonna be the health officer for this town of Castleton forever. And I've kicked this around, if we're gonna talk about short-term rentals, is it at the same, in the same breath, we talk about that position, that health officer is being a building inspector, and we work with Division of Fire Safety, and we create a more holistic approach to occupancy, safety, life-safety issues here to Antietam.
I think Rutland's approach with using the fire marshal is a good short-term fix, but I think you're describing a more long-term scenario.
Yeah, well, the Division of Fire Safety and the fire marshals are so, they hired some more people, but they're so inundated with cases and work that they admittedly will tell you, we don't get to your town and go through all this stuff. And that's why the violations occur, because there's no, mom and dad aren't watching, or big brothers not watching, however you want to look at it. It's just, it's just something to think about for the future as far as life-safety issues in this town.
There's a lot of apartments right now that have way more than two people per bedroom.
I can agree with that.
We've been through some of them. I was with you when I was on the fire department.
Yeah, well, I'm not as accurate as I was, but I bet they see them.
Three, four bedrooms down a hallway, and if you were in the back one during a fire, there's zero chance.
Yeah, with no egress, they don't have the secondary.
I've seen four people to a bedroom more than once. So, what's our next steps, guys?
Well, somewhere along the line, we gotta, we gotta invite these people, the only seventy houses to a meeting. They gotta have a say in this, too.
Absolutely.
So, before we go too far with this, I want that to happen. That's my main thing. Because I don't know the ins and outs of this. Now, you're talking short-term rentals, but then you kinda threw in the college house. Now, college house is not a short-term rental.
No, there was a, yeah, that's still, you know.
It's still an issue, yes, absolutely.
It's a problem in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Which has gotten much better over the last twenty years. If that was twenty-five years ago, that happened.
Okay.
And again, I'm not saying that we should try and regulate this out of the community. I'm just saying that we need to do it in a way that's safe for the people that rent and that's fair for the adjoining property owners. Because it's no longer residential. This is a business. They're renting rooms by the night. It's really a motel, hotel, and if it's in a residential area, it should be controlled.
So, I'll say this again. What's our next steps?
You're the chairman, Mr. Chairman.
I know. I mean, I, we can schedule a special meeting. We can put it on the agenda for a month from now. I mean, you know, we're, we've got some pretty full agendas coming up, so I don't want to stack it up too much.
If we, as a board, adopted an ordinance like this one, then I think we have to advertise that.
Vote meetings.
And there's a forty, fifty-day period where someone can gather petition, a vote.
Yeah, there's a whole process.
There's a whole process. To adopt an ordinance, yeah, there's a process. But you'd probably want to find out what you want to include in your draft ordinance so that when you bring people in, they understand what you're trying to put out. If you just bring them in here and have a conversation, that could go on for forever.
So, I would say that we need to come up with a draft ordinance and then have a public meeting on it.
Well, I had a question and a comment, or a request and a comment, and I was gonna request that if we could all agree to use Rutland's as a framework, that we all take a good, hard look at that and be ready to discuss it, at least briefly at the next meeting. And then the second question is, for the town manager, is which attorney would be appropriate to look at that once we get to the point where we have at least a skeleton or an outline? Merrill?
The only thing that I haven't seen in any of these that I think, I think should be added is, I'm not saying an annual, but I think that there should be some sort of sewer and septic inspection for the Airbnbs, because I know, like, on the lake, the last number that I heard thrown around was there was something like two hundred that are on the verge of failing that haven't failed yet. And we're adding a whole bunch of extra people onto old septic systems that may not be able to support it. And with the, all the groundwater stuff and the wells that had issues up by the lake and stuff like that, it might be something to look into. Like, when they do apply, they need to have certified inspection done on their septic systems to make sure that they're adequate for the, you know, eight occupants that are allowed or whatever it be.
Well, include that in your, add that to your homework.
Okay.
To, no, if we all take this and we look at it hard, and even if we only spend ten minutes on it to the next meeting, let's spend ten minutes on it.
Change what we have to change.
And see, you know, and gather our suggestions, and then we'll consolidate those. Is this available as a Word document?
I have a PDF or Word, I don't remember.
Well, we can convert it to a Word document.
You can get it on, I have it downloaded. It's online.
Okay, and then we can, so you see what I can say? We can start massaging it and adding and subtracting and...
Yeah, I think it's a long process.
And then, you know, at some point in time, we'll actually have something that we can present to an attorney to review, to make sure we've got our ducks in a row.
And then we'll start the public process.
And be fair to the property owners. I certainly don't want to take away anyone's property rights.
I agree with that, but we also make sure it's an agenda item, so it's on the agenda so that if there is someone that either has a concern or a good suggestion, they're able to do that.
Yep.
You know, on the public.
I think you're probably looking at, like, June timeframe to roll this thing out, to, it's, to meet the public, public meeting out there for a public information meeting and get it through the attorney and all that kind of stuff, so.
So, we all have homework for the next meeting.
Not that it matters to any of you, but I won't be here. I'm gonna be in the Caribbean.
Until April twenty-third.
Keep rubbing that into us, yeah.
What are you leaving, Mary?
Do you need a chaperone?
Leaving the sex.
So, take a look at it before the sixth and give me a call if you have suggestions.
I have glanced at it, but I haven't.
Well, take a good, hard look, please, and then if you wanna, if you have suggestions, let me know about them, or Mike, either one.
Okay.
And before the, so that we can add your, add your comments into the mix on the next board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, can I correct something that Mr. Brown had said?
Certainly.
Can I look at the camera? I did not do this. I tasked this to Karen Stewart, and she did this for you.
Perfect.
I can't take credit for it.
That Karen is very efficient.
Yes.
Boy, the town's lucky to have her.
Yes.
That's what administrative assistants are supposed to do. They're supposed to administer, they're supposed to, supposed to watch your back and take care of things.
Well, it was nice to have all this information available.
It was. Anything else on this before we move on?
Just, I just wanted to stress one more time to our town manager, can you look at the seat? Or do I need to speak to Karen?
What? Yes, please, please speak to me. Are you gonna look for, like, a template from the VLCT? Are you gonna still do that? For this thing? Yeah. Yeah, I made a note to do it. See if they had a model one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Then we can match it up.
There is one.
There is one.
They have one just about for everything.
I went in and got the Sleitman's Handbook today, and I saw short-term rental as one of the, one of the little pictures.
That one's been vetted by an attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, they run it through their staff attorneys.
So, can you provide us with a copy in our packets for the next meeting?
Yep, I made a note for it.
And then we'll take a look at Rutland's and take a look at that one, and we'll try to have a shorter conversation than we've had on some of the topics. We're running late again. Okay. Anything else on short-term rentals? How about licenses? You ready?
Yeah, you don't want me to do it. Rob can do it.
We need a motion for liquor licenses.
Do we do all three at once?
You can do, you can basically just read it off the agenda.
You want to do all three at one time?
I don't see why not.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Lake Bombazine Hospitality LLC DBA Lake House Pub and Grill, first-class liquor license, third-class liquor license, and outside consumption permit. Breading LLC DBA Third Place Pizzeria First Class Restaurant/Bar License, third-class restaurant/bar license, and outside consumption. Cat Breth LLC DBA, the Bombazine Dog, first-class restaurant/bar license, third-class restaurant/bar license, and outside consumption permit.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded to approve those liquor licenses. Any discussion?
Just, just one quick question, and if anybody can answer, I don't worry, running late. Just explanation of the first-class liquor license versus the third-class liquor license.
I don't know.
I've asked that before.
I've, we've had that discussion, but it's been a decade.
Do you know wine and beer, and the other one was?
Third class is wine and beer.
Third class is wine and beer.
And first class must be the other stuff.
The hard test.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's the only difference between the six. Okay, all right. I didn't know if one should be sold on property and one sold on property and taken out of the property.
No, it's not legal anywhere.
None of that. Not in this state, it is, but in other states.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the chief has signed off on those, correct?
He always does. He always vets these.
Okay.
All right. We won't put him on the agenda, just so you know. We won't put him on the agenda if he hasn't.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Moving on.
Yeah, really.
Parsons Mill Bike and Ped Grant. So, that's the question about the municipal project manager. It was just, the proposal was in your packet for Fussin O'Neill to be the municipal project manager. So, do I, can I get a motion, please?
I would make a motion to approve Fussin O'Neill for project manager for Parsons Hill.
Second it?
For a sum for thirty-six thousand dollars?
For a sum for thirty-six? Where's the number here?
Tom, page two.
Uh, it's, yeah, thirty-six thousand for a sum of thirty-six thousand.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the contract for project management for the Parsons Hill sidewalk project. Do we have any discussion?
I think I put in my report that the ARPA funds that the board had approved captured thirty-two thousand dollars in, in that total for project management. This is a little bit over that, but I'm pretty confident that we can absorb it for a thousand dollars for a hundred, two-hundred thousand-dollar project, so I think.
I'm also confident that the two-year-old estimate of two-hundred thousand may not be accurate anymore.
No, it's probably way more than accurate.
So, we're probably gonna have to go back to reconsider funding on this project anyways.
It's potential there. Depends on how it gets put out to bid, because there's no, there's no federal, it's not federal, it's state, so there's no cross-cutters like they were talking about.
Right.
So, it, depending on how it gets bid out, as long as it's inspected and somebody's testing the materials, I could give a crap, to be honest with you.
Well, there's a potential we're gonna have to revisit the cost, the funding on this. So, at this point, I'm inclined to proceed. So, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I sign this, or do you, Mike?
Well, it depends on how you set it. You can either authorize.
No, you sign it. It's got your name on it.
My name's all over everything anyway.
No, worry about it later. He can worry about it later. So, why don't you, why don't somebody make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign this, just to make sure that...
So moved. Was that good enough?
That's good. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor to have the town manager sign this contract?
Aye.
Aye. There.
You guys really, it's Rob and Bob now, it's Bob and Rob.
Well, it's just to be, just in case.
Call me whatever. Call me Sam if you want.
Well, we've learned the hard way a few times of what will stand up to an audit, what won't, that will.
Oh, yeah, you did the right thing.
Okay, moving on. Let's see, stop parking, okay, line-stripping bid award.
Can I ask the town manager for his recommendation?
Absolutely. I should've done that, but so feel free. Go ahead.
My recommendation's K-5 Corporation. We've used them before. There were some issues that Jeff had discovered, that the municipal uniform traffic regulations say that things like parking lines have to be fourteen feet long, and handicap parking spots have to be certain criteria, and we were short on some of those, with the, with K-5. So, because they were doing them like twelve-feet lines. So, that's been addressed, and I don't have any issues that they can do the work, but as long as the board understands that this is always an annual requirement, and that paint lasts for about a year. If we want the paint that's gonna last longer, we're gonna pay a lot more money to get that done. And in some of the areas where the most important painting's gonna happen is in the village, crosswalks, and that kind of stuff, and that, things are gonna get paved here coming up in another year and a half, and, I don't know, two thousand twenty-five. And there's no sense of doing all this, putting all this money into it to have to tear it up or repave over it. And so, when we go back through that process, one of the things that was discussed was stamping them so they last longer. So, I would ask that you just, we go with the ten thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars from K-5 Corporation, and they were, part of this packet includes getting the village done before commencement, and then the rest can be done after that. So, that is my recommendation.
Make a motion, we go with K-5 Corporation for a sum of ten thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Second.
That's for the line, crosswalk, railroad stripping bid?
Yes, for the line slash crosswalk slash railroad stripping bids.
Any more discussion on this?
Getting the village done before commencement. They agreed to that, right?
Yeah, when they bid on, that was in the bid packet.
Oh, it was for all of them.
And they highlighted where the areas were, yeah.
Okay, and just stay on top of that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm not doing it by hand again. I had a paint roller out there.
I know, I know. Heard all about it.
Any more discussion?
Have you got a second, Rob?
I'll second it.
Rob seconded it.
Well, Mark already seconded it.
Oh, somebody did.
I'm sorry.
Mark did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, what's next? Stormwater runoff, West Crystal Haven. I had Mike do a chronology that we just got. Mr. Kearns has been talking to us for over two years now.
Twelve years. Twelve years.
Okay, I stand corrected. Two years that I have documented with minutes now, and I just barely got this, Tom. I'm gonna go through it. I can tell you that we have engineers from the state coming soon?
Well, we actually have stone engineering as part of a grant, that they selected stone engineering through Hillary Solomon and Rutland Regional Planning Commission. So, they've selected the person, the agency to do the stormwater scoping mitigation master plan type thing.
So, what's the timeline on that?
The email says, we should get out a contract to stone engineering in the next couple of days, then we can set up a site visit. It might be, they might be able to help with the landowner, but they want to have the landowner, in this current, in this instance, it's Mr. Kearns, present there when they do their visit.
Will that help, Tom?
You don't have an easement is your problem. So, no matter what they will say, you don't have an easement.
So, what do you propose we do with the water that's flowing down from Route Thirty into that area?
Before you built the road, it didn't flow into that area. So, you built a road, you built a giant stone trench, you have trenches that goes all along West Crystal Haven. Other property owners in the whole area there have now trenched their land to hook up to those trenches. That's the water that's coming through the property. We've been on that property for four generations. I have photographs all that time documenting no water coming through there. You built the road, when you built the, I don't know, is it a road or is it not a road? Because the papers I have says it's not a road.
Well, I know they.
We maintain it, so it's a damn road.
Well, we use it to turn the plow trucks around in the winter. That's pretty much all it's used for, but, so it is a road. It's town maintained.
Road would be open in the summer.
Hey, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kearns has, his attorney sent us a letter. I don't think it's a, to, really wise to go into great detail in this meeting until our attorney has a chance to look at what Mr. Kearns has asked, is his attorney said he's going to do on one May. And that's to block the culvert at his property line. I think that our attorney should look at that letter, which I haven't done, and, and kind of advise us what our next step should be.
Okay. So at this point, I think what we're gonna do is, we're gonna make sure that the rest of the select board has a copy of this chronology so that they can know at least what's occurred in the last two years, or two and a half years, or two, well, twenty-five months. And then from there, once you're aware of that, and then we can make sure we're all up to speed on what the state is doing to identify what the cause of this water is and what they can possibly do with it. I will also state that at one point in time, did not this select board offer to replace that culvert?
No. I asked it, I offered them an easement to replace the culvert. They didn't want it because they didn't want responsibility for the seawall. So I have a broken pipe running under my cottage. It's running behind the seawall, which has developed two large cracks. I'm not gonna, I've been told for years that they were gonna come and look at it.
Well, we have, Mr. Chairman, we have looked at it.
I am not gonna expose my family's cottage and our seawall to this nonsense anymore. So you don't have an easement, it's my pipe. You never asked permission to use my pipe. You just connected your water to my pipe. You're not allowed to do that.
I can't speak for previous administrations and what was done twelve years ago, okay?
Mr. Brown just talked about private property and not taking, confiscating people's private property in the last discussion. You, that's exactly what you're doing now.
I don't agree with everything you're saying, and at this point, I think to maintain civility, we should allow our attorneys to look at the document that your attorney sent to town.
That's not news to you. I told you that last year that was gonna happen. At the time, the previous chairman said I should consult an attorney beforehand. So I consulted three attorneys, they all said I have the right to do it. I am not gonna subject my property to, to the water anymore. It's damaging my property.
And I believe that, and you don't agree with me, and we have already established that. I believe this board did offer to repair that culvert at one point in time. I do know that.
And the seawall?
I do, you be quiet for a second, please. Can you be quiet for a second, please? I do know that we went up there and ran a camera through that culvert and identified some cracks. And I believe subsequent to that, we offered to repair that culvert. Now, I know you don't agree with me, but I'm very confident that that occurred. Now, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go forward and let the attorneys fight it out, and if you're willing.
No. My attorneys told you what we're doing, so that's what we did.
Well, that's, I guess that's your prerogative, but that's gonna create other issues. When that, when that culvert's blocked, that water's gonna overflow the road and run onto your property on the surface.
No, because according to your plans, it's actually gonna run to McQuade property. So if you look at the surveys of the original plan, and the reason why that road wasn't built originally is because when you came to us, you didn't have a right of way for the water, so it was never built. So if you look at the plans, these are from nineteen fifty-two, which is the original survey for the, for the thing. And the road is on here that was never built. And if you look at where your, this is the town's survey, where the, it says the water's gonna drain onto the McQuade property. So that's, you know, that's, you know, it's not my issue. So I have a broken culvert that runs under my property. It's not a town culvert. The town has been aware for twelve years that it's not a town culvert, and they're using it as my, at, at my pleasure. When you built the road, I was promised that it wasn't gonna be a road. I got all the emails, and I know I had, I got the peg TV that he said was inconclusive. But I got emails from the town manager at the time saying they're not building the road. They're building a simple turnaround there. So the town has been dishonest with me and my family since the get-go. And this was the first, this started May second, two thousand eleven. All beyond ten years. It's gone through three town managers every time. We're gonna take care of it, we're gonna take care of it. So now I'm on my third town manager with this thing. All the select board is different than it was at the time. Previous select board, oh, so the town's word is not worth anything to me in this regard.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way. All I can tell you is that.
Well, you, 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 you put it that way. I have a photograph of my great uncle standing on the site, and there's a ditch that looks like it's about three or four inches deep, which was the seasonal water that came through there. So why do you need a ten-foot-wide stone-lined ditch for the water now? If it's the same water?
I really don't have an answer for that, Tom. I do know.
It's not the same water. That's obvious, right?
I'm not, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to make a statement that I'm gonna later regret.
Listen, you didn't need that ditch. We did, we never had the problem on the property. You built the road. You didn't, with no public comment, none of it, you just decided you were gonna build a road. I realize you weren't the chairman at the time, that's neither here nor there. You are, you're responsible for what the town did in the past. The town years ago built a sewer plant, so we all benefit from that now. You get to benefit from it, we get to benefit. So it's an accumulation of what the town has done year after year to build a certain infrastructure.
And we can't undo what was done in the past. What we can do is try to work together.
You can undo what was done in the past if you wanted to. See, that's your choice. You can either find somewhere else to put your water. You can negotiate a lease with me for the water, because I'm not giving you an easement anymore, because you've dicked me around for twelve years. Or you can put it back the way it was, and then there was no water issue. So those are your choices. My attorney said what he said. I told the board that last year, so you knew it was coming, and that's what's gonna happen. My seawall, it's got two large cracks in it right now. Because the water, the pipe is cracked, even though they told me for years, oh, no, it's not, it's not. Then he finally put the, what, put the camera in there? Oh, yes, it is cracked. This is after twelve years of me telling the town it was cracked.
All I can do is move forward, Tom.
You're not moving forward, you're moving sideways.
I don't agree with you.
You're moving sideways.
I don't agree with you.
I know you don't. So have a good evening, and we'll see what happens.
I'll take any comments from the board before we move on, if there are any.
Just, just a question. Now I'm confused. Did the town put in that culvert that goes across this property that dumps the water into the lake, or did we not?
We did not put that culvert in.
Who put that culvert in?
His uncle or great uncle or something, back at forty-seven or seventy years ago.
Okay, why did he put that culvert in then at that time? What, what water was he trying to?
I haven't been able to get a straight answer out of Tom.
Because he's saying there was just a little ditch, and there was, there was water, but it was seasonal, is what he's saying. And, but anybody that's been on that property and look at it, it, those were cottages, right? And more stuff's built up there, bigger places, and there's, the water table has obviously changed in that area. And that's not something the town did, that's something Mother Nature did. And now that water has to go somewhere. And if it doesn't go through that ditch and into that culvert, then there is no place to divert it. And that's why we're having a stormwater engineer come in to say, what can we do and what's the state allow us to do to discharge this stormwater somewhere? There's no easy answer. If we discharge it in the middle where it was, look at that property now, it's a swamp. It's not gonna get any better, so.
Water table up there is like twelve inches below surface.
We dug for those sewer lines, and we were, we got down three feet on East Crystal Haven, and water come pouring in there.
Yep.
And it's just, it's not a very, that area was built with cottages years and years ago. And now it's year-round residences, the road's been built up over the years, and, and the water, that water coming off Route Thirty and from the north, it's a swamp in there.
The only thing that I'll say is, I have looked at that, and what might have been a swamp with one outlying area. There are now culverts that direct everything right into that trench that runs right to his house now. Where everything before it might have laid out, you can see where a lot of that area has been raised up by people over the years. And all that's funneled, all that swampy area, when I was a kid, we used to ride dirt bikes in there, and none of those houses were there. And it funneled everything now into that area that runs directly there. So, well, it may not have been, there may have always been some water runoff there. I believe that probably whatever's been done, not necessarily by the town, but just in development in that area, has increased the runoff through that area.
Every roof has reduced the impervious surface.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done a lot of that, or not, I say we as human beings have done a lot of that. The town may or may not be responsible for some of it.
I mean, I guess the first, the first thing that we need to do is probably check with a lawyer and see what happens if he blocks it off, because if it's his and he has the right to block it off, then we're looking at something totally different. And that eliminates that whole issue right there. Say, okay, Tom, block it off, that we're done with that, then we'll move on to the next problem.
That chronology goes back into twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, and everything that Tom asked us to do besides not run water through this, that culvert, that pipe, it's not even a culvert.
Yeah.
We followed through on. It just, you saw that a three, it takes, how long does it take to do this?
Oh, it takes forever to do anything, and, yeah, no.
We, we've been stepping forward, trying to get this stuff worked on, and, and Tom, Mr. Kearns makes the allegations like we did nothing, but that's not true. It's just, it's a slow process.
Is it gonna flood his whole property if he blocks that culvert?
I think it's gonna flood his neighbor's property.
Yeah, it's gonna run down to McQuade.
And unfortunately, if it's his culvert, then he has the right to block it off, in my opinion. If he owns it and it's there, then he doesn't want culvert there anymore. I mean, it's not easement through the, through the town.
I, I would like to think he would give us at least a, a chance to have the engineers come and look at it and see if we can formulate a plan. Now, can we check the minutes? I'm pretty confident we offered to replace that culvert at one point in time. Can we check the minutes so we know the actual date and time we did that?
Yeah, can you add that to this?
It may be in there.
Yeah, just, that was like, those are from emails.
Yeah.
I didn't look at the minutes yet, so, but yes, and at the time, he said I wasn't gonna give us something unless we agreed. One of them was cleaning the water before, because it was dirty water, he said it was dirty water coming out of there. And all the pictures that we have show clean water going in and dirty, some with dirty water coming out. And that's when they camered it and found a break in there. So it doesn't run under his camp, it runs along his side of it.
Yeah.
Um, so it's not going under his camp.
And I'm pretty confident we offered to replace that at one point.
Yeah, we did.
And he didn't wanna do it because he was worried about his seawall.
Seawall. We said, well, that's something that we can work through.
If we break his seawall, we'll fix it.
Good old kinds of cement that fixes that.
You know, I'm, and we've offered to fix this at least once, and he just, you heard him say tonight that we never did that. And I don't believe that's accurate, but we're gonna verify that.
It's been within, it's been within the last two years because I was on the board.
Well, we're gonna get the minutes, then we'll know for sure, so that the next time he tells us that we didn't do that, we can say, excuse me, sir, we're on April eighth, two thousand thirty, twenty-three.
In the time you were on the board, the board offered to replace that.
I remember doing that, but I don't remember which meeting it was.
Because he, because he gave a, remember he had a peg TV clip he gave, sent out to everybody to watch and stuff?
I still have that.
That was, that was on, when that turnaround was built.
I will give it to Mark.
And then to Rob.
Maybe Mark can show me how to do it.
That was in a meeting in the old, original.
Thing you plug into your computer.
Thumbshot.
New computers don't even have a place for.
Well, I don't even have the old computers, Mark, so.
Oh.
I will give it to you, and you can show me, and you can look at it at the same time. Uh, but I just, I wanted, I wanted to, to speak to Tom, but he's left already. When that road turnaround, whatever you guys wanna call it, was put in, he was told that it was not gonna be put in. It was just gonna be a turnaround. And the town manager, and it wasn't you, or the road commissioner said, no, 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 we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna do that. Within ten days, they were up there with excavators and putting all kinds, so they, they didn't do what they said they weren't gonna do. They did do what they said they weren't gonna do. So in defense of Tom, well, he's been lied to.
Well, Jim Levy followed up with, uh, was it Torrey?
Tom Torrey was chairman at the time.
And he said, I can remember going up there, but I didn't tell, what he's claiming said that, that's not what happened. So it's, unless it's in a minute somewhere, which we couldn't locate. When Karen first did this research, we couldn't find any minutes that reflected a decision made by the select board.
No, it wasn't, I think, I think the road commissioner or road foreman just decided on his own how he was gonna do it, and he went and did it after he told Tom. So I just, I just wanted to bring that forward.
Fair enough. Now, let's move on.
Yep, that's fine.
So we've got some things we're gonna do here.
We better do it very quick, because May first is gonna be here, before you know it. Just one, you know.
Yeah, I'm all aware of that.
Okay, alright.
That's tough doing that one. Anyways. All right, uh, do you wanna talk about the highway budget tonight, Mike, or you wanna put that off for two weeks?
Um, after my last discussion with the accountant, I'm off the ledge a little bit.
Okay.
I'm concerned, but I'm not on the ledge. I was on the ledge last week.
Mike was concerned that we might run out of money for the, the current fiscal year for the highway crew, but he's thinking we might squeak by.
And, and that's because some of the money had to get backed out, like we paid for paving out of reserve funds. So when I start backing that stuff out of there, uh, it's not.
As bad.
It's not as bad. It's not good, but it's not as bad.
So I, before we move on, though, I just wanna throw a couple of things out for the board members to think about. And I know I'm catching you unprepared, so please be understanding. Um, we have, I think it's forty-nine miles of paved highway and twenty-three or, no, thirty-three or thirty-four miles of gravel road. Sound about right?
Thirty-three, I got fifty-six miles.
Well, anyways, that's, I got that from the state website yesterday. And we tried, we used to think that we could pave ten percent, or pave our, repave our roads every ten years. So therefore, we wanna pave ten percent of that, that's five miles a year. And we budget, what, about three hundred thousand for paving now?
Two hundred, this year, two hundred and thirty-nine, the previously, two hundred and nine.
Okay, how many miles will that do? Two or three?
In today's world?
Yeah.
About maybe a, a mile and a smidgen.
So there's something that we need to start thinking about. We're now on a twenty- or thirty-year cycle for paving instead of a ten-year cycle, so.
Just enough to pave sand hill road, that's just about a mile and a smidgen.
Every thirty years, not a problem.
I think the smidgen stops right before the Harris Farm.
So, no, I just wanted all the board members to realize that we have this one more conundrum coming. So that's, that's all I got for that, so we can move on. So, moving on, we're gonna talk about ARPA a little bit tonight, because we're way behind schedule.
Okay, let's not, I, I got some stuff in my paperwork or in my packet, and I don't really know what it, what it refers to.
You, you might have had something that was out there with a copier. I got some in your packet.
Well, it's something to do about a culvert, but it doesn't say what or where. This isn't all on the town Kearns property.
Brown, Brown Farm Road, Brown Farm.
Okay, that's not on our agenda, but I don't know.
It may be in my report, I don't know.
Oh, it's part of the report.
Okay, okay, then I'll zip it. Yep. Alright, sorry about that.
So I don't know how, I don't know how deep a dive we wanna get into ARPA tonight. Just to refresh everybody's memory, we have to, um, obligate all the, any, any and all funds by the end of this calendar year and spend them all by the end of twenty twenty-four, or twenty twenty-six, rather, or the fund sunset. So I don't know if anyone's looked this over recently or have any thoughts in anything you wanna share tonight. But like I said, we're horribly behind schedule, so I don't know if we wanna do a deep dive in this tonight.
Ten thirty, the last time, Mr. Kearns.
I'd still like to see the vehicles, uh, replacement schedule, or whatever is coming, right?
Yeah, and Rob had sent me a message, and I was working with Heath on some numbers, and I have all that stuff, and I just gotta get it put together to send out to the board prior to, I wanna send it by email, and then it'll be in a packet, but, um, but the, the stuff with, um, the fire department reflects what the chief has for his, his capital asset management. And the highway department, um, had to get massage, that was the one that I was working on with Jeff for vehicle replacement. So that's been completed, so if you wanna get it on the agenda for the next meeting, then I will make sure that, that's all ready to roll.
Let's put it on a tentative agenda, because our agendas seem to be quite prolific lately. Let's put it on a tentative agenda because our agendas seem to be quite prolific lately.
So.
Not lately.
Last meeting.
Well, we don't wanna try to, so, I'm gonna move on, uh, just, once again, you know, everyone still has this document, the ARPA list. So, keep in mind that we're gonna have to start making some hard choices in the next three to six months. We won't talk about it next meeting, okay? We'll move, we'll bounce over that, wait for you to get back.
Wait for me to get back, okay.
Okay, uh, managers' report.
So, just to clarify, so, so the ARPA will be brought up at, what, the second meeting, April, or you haven't established that yet?
Well, the second meeting in April's fine. And there might be some more information prior to that that we can, I've been trying to get some people to cough up some information for us. So, hopefully, we'll have, be able to start making, at least establishing priorities. So, Mike, I'm gonna throw this over to you for now. You can go through your, what you consider your high points, and then the board can follow up with any questions they have.
Right. What I'm gonna focus on is just the stuff that has actions needed. Um, so I'm gonna, I'll skip the first one, cause we're not talking about ARPA right now. And that was, if people are listening, that was about the transportation alternative grant, um, for the one point two million dollar bike impediment.
That's the down, the down-street one, or, you know, the village.
Parsons Hills, you've already approved the engineering for Fussin' O'Neal, so we'll pass that one on page two.
The Salt and Sand Shed, we're gonna be moving forward with finding a project manager soon. Is that the plan?
That was sent, the, the proposal was sent to Pete, and the, I, I showed you in here, we rank ordered, um, they, it's something called the at-the-ready list at Vtrans. They've already vetted these engineers, uh, so we don't have to go through that process. But Fussin' O'Neal, DuBois and King, and VHB were the top three. Why Fussin' O'Neal is rising to the top on these is they have the best public engagement. Their plans and what they did on the pre, the last sidewalk project is they didn't go out there and do what happened with you, Rob, on the first one. You know, they, they did, they're, they're good at public engagement. And, um, so, besides that, they're all kind of like boilerplate. You know, they, they provide the same kinda services, but after the first project that was down Route four A to Hyattville Plaza, that was a lesson learned of having a good municipal project manager that's out there proactive, meeting with the residents, talking what was coming on or their concerns.
Learned what nots do.
You guys ruined my last vacation that I had, just so you know with that.
We're, we're gonna build them now, damn it. That, uh, but, you know, that, with Rob's, and it wasn't just Rob's place, but other places, the Legion, um, and a few others, um, it costs a lot of money. Cause we had to go back, we had to backpedal a little bit and bring in people to do surveys and, uh, measure elevations, and, um, it, it costs more money in the end. It wasn't good public relations for a project that was really a benefit to the community, but there was no door-to-door discussions and, cause how many people attend public meetings? Rarely, right? People, most people don't read, they go, I can't wait to go to that select board meeting to talk about that sidewalk. But when it's in front of their house and it's starting to impact their property and, and, and whatever, whatever way it is, becomes important. So, having somebody out there, uh, engaging those homeowners is important to.
Well, I, I can say I went to the sidewalk meeting for my house, and the sidewalk is completely different than what I was shown at that sidewalk meeting, a hundred percent. Not even close in relation, so, we gotta make sure that these people know this is exactly what you're gonna have. Your driveway's gonna be this wide. You had two driveways, you're gonna have one. You're not gonna have that parking area anymore.
Well, we, we, uh, learned a lot on that project.
I was like, hey, Mike Jones, welcome to the town of Castle, and go out there and get beat up by everybody about the sidewalk. And that's what it was. It was just like kitty.
Nice meeting ya.
We did not know that the state was gonna revise all those drawings, and our engineer didn't tell us that. So, when they showed up with the shovels and started building this project, it was completely different than the drawings yours truly had gone through at several public meetings. And I had no idea that the state was gonna change those. Now, I know the state will change them. So, we make sure that we know what's actually gonna get built, so.
That's good.
Well, I've said this for a lot of years, never ever squander a perfectly good mistake on blame. Always turn it into a learning experience. So, that's, we learned a lot.
I appreciate that.
Did you learn anything, Mr. Jones?
Huh?
Did you learn anything?
Yeah, make sure you have good public engagement.
Yeah.
Get the right project manager.
Yeah, so, and Fussin' O'Neal's proven that they, they able to do that, so, and, and be an advocate for not only us, but for listening to the people that have the complaint or concern. Uh, so at the bottom of that one, the hundred and sixty that I changed the ARPA spreadsheet from two hundred thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand, and that was the, taking the eight hundred thousand estimated cost for the salt and sand shed and taking twenty percent, uh, for contingency, uh, for, for, uh, cost overruns is cause of inflation and cost of materials and all that. Um, but because I don't believe this will be done, I don't believe this will be done in two thousand twenty-four. I, I, I think this project is gonna be the spring, summer of twenty-five. So, that allows me to also apply for that extra two hundred thousand dollars through the, um, transportation alternative program. So, that would give the town a total of five hundred thousand dollars in grant, plus the two hundred and, whatever, sixty-five or fifty-six, and get the dyslexi on that one, but, um, so we could be potentially at five hundred plus our two fifty-six, so, um, we could be close to eight hundred thousand dollars as it is. And then it gives us that one sixty would give us a buffer, but until we get it put out the bid this, this year and get the prices back, we really won't know. But it should give you enough time to have it back before you have to obligate it at the end of the fiscal year, or the end of the calendar year. And that's what I'm striving for, so that you can make a, a good decision, uh, on the use of the ARPA funds.
We do believe that at this point that we'll be able to, to get that engineered and out to bid this calendar year, correct? And that means that we can get it built next year before our leasing with Ruby expires.
Yep, okay. Any questions on that one?
No.
I think we already talked, I'm on page three, paragraph E at the bottom, the highway safety improvement grant. Yep, that was already talked about, or I think last meeting I mentioned it, but, um, I, I got a, a quote from the foreman, the highway foreman, on the post pounder, and it's not two thousand dollars, it's twenty-four hundred dollars. And so, he's like, I don't wanna talk about it. I'll, um, we'll just use a sledgehammer. And, um, so, I, I've sent a, um, an email to the grant manager asking if we could use any of the grant funds to help buy the post pounder. Cause it's gonna make it a lot easier, um, than standing on the tailgate of a pickup truck, uh, over a ten-foot bank, trying to pound the tip of a, a post in the ground.
That's what the new guys are for.
Yeah, I know, but they gotta be able to reach it and do all the stuff, so.
So, how many man-hours would that post pounder save in the course of a year?
Oh, I don't know how, if you're asking me a number, I, I can't say, but.
Would it save twenty-four hundred dollars in labor?
I think it'll save, time-wise, the twenty-four hundred dollars in.
Why don't they drive them in with a bucket?
They've tried that too, um, and we've used the backhoe, and it's just moving, when we move that, the backhoe doesn't do a very good job, but moving the excavator, because we can't drive it down the road. You have to put it on the, you have to put it on the, um, the trailer, the twenty-ton trailer. We have one driver that can drive it to forty feet down the road to the next one. You know, and it's just, it's inefficient.
I don't wanna beat this to death or micromanage, Mike, but if you can prove to us that buying a twenty-four hundred dollar post pounder would pay for itself in a year's time, I would certainly be willing to try to come up with that money. What do you think, Mark?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
There's not too many boys today that can swing a sledgehammer for very long.
High people we just hired are this tall.
Take that out of the equation. Will it pay for itself and then create efficiency? If it will, then let's do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that there's a couple of things that might come your way. One, another one is the, the basket for the, the loader. So, a two-person, OSHA-approved, weight-carrying capacity basket that we can lift people up and to cut trees down. And we don't pay thirty-seven thousand dollars to a tree company. Um, you know, it might not do everything that a tree company can do, cause they can only go so far with the loader. Things like, it's gonna be like, we're gonna get like a twenty-foot reach with a pole saw, but that's, that, we can do a lot with that, and it's gonna be, when, when it costs to, you saw the estimate for two trees down in the village, like seven, eight thousand dollars. I mean, we pay, if we pay, you know, three thousand dollars for that two-man basket lift or a safety basket, it's gonna pay for itself in not too long of a period of time.
First three or two.
Yeah.
Well, if you could solve eighty percent of the problem, it makes the other twenty percent easy to deal with.
Yeah.
So, the post pounder should last fifteen years.
Yeah, I mean, it's battery-powered, so, um, you know, we have to replace rechargeable batteries, but anyway, that's, uh.
It sounds like it'd be pretty easy to justify, Mike.
Yeah, I know, and I just need to, um, put the other, the, where, where I think the money can come from. As I get closer to the end of the highway budget, maybe, uh, there, we can work it, but if not, um, July first isn't that far away.
Well, if I were Jim, I'd say the piggy bank.
Yeah, and that's what Mark, uh, Joe Mark said. Where are you gonna get the piggy bank? And, and people laugh, but every cat out of the bag. Um, okay, so, I'm, I'm page four, um, that's the Brown Farm Road, Bob, that you have some stuff in there.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna have to apply for a grant for this. The, the culvert alone is twenty, we just, twenty-four thousand dollars?
The one bid we got.
Twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-six cents.
That's, that's just a culvert. And our, our, our machine's not big enough, so either we have to hire somebody or rent a machine to do it. And, um, we don't wanna keep this road, it's residents there, so we can't keep the road closed for a long period of time. So, it has to be somebody that can, has the big enough equipment come in and out of there. Um, so, the, the grants due on one April. I, I met with Karen and, um, Jeff today. Uh, they're on track to get that submitted. And if that fails, uh, we don't, we don't get approved for it, then the Better Roads Large Structure Grants in the fall. And I said, we're just gonna have to make this work, um, until we can get the funding, cause this is, this is gonna be a large project. This is gonna be probably all total. If we did it in-house and we had to rent a, a machine and everything, um, we're still probably talking forty-five thousand dollars to get it all done. Um, so, if we had to hire someone else out, it's gonna cost more than that. So, um, I know Jeff was leaning towards getting some quotes from Fabians, um, Philskovs, uh, Teconic excavating to kinda see where people were falling and, and what they thought it would cost to do that project without officially putting up a bid.
Just wanna make a comment on that.
Yeah.
I'm not real happy with, but I think it's your wording.
What is that?
It says, this is only one quote, so for our bid policy, we need to solicit for three. That's which I wanna see.
Yeah.
But if only two reply, that is acceptable.
Cause that's what our, that's what our bid policy says.
That, if we only get two, that's acceptable?
Yeah, if you try for three or whatever, and you, and where people aren't responding, and all we get back is two, that, the bid says, if you tried to get more than, if you tried to get three and you can't get people to give you bids, that two is acceptable. It's like having a quorum.
What are you gonna do?
If I put it up to fifty people and nobody wants to bid on it.
Forget about it because, hey, we didn't get three bids. We only got two, so I guess we're not doing that project.
I know, but I don't wanna make it a standard, you know, and I've seen it too much, too much, over and over and over. There's enough people out there doing this kinda work that we should get four, four or five or six bids, if they're, if they're, if they need the work.
I wanna.
But maybe not.
We, we put it out there. It goes in the paper, and how many calls I get from these companies that monitor, they monitor sites? Cause we put it on VLCT, VLCT site, we put it in the papers, and I get calls that'll say, what was the, what was the, um, uh, who won the bid and what was the price? And I'm like, how do you even know about it? And, but they, they just, they have a firm that monitors this, and then, so it's out there.
All right. There's been cases where we've submitted RFQs to three or four companies and only gotten one back.
I understand that.
But, but we need to, I do agree that we need to put the effort in.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we're, well, please, please don't, please don't think that we're trying to circumvent the system and
No, no.
And sometimes we just don't get three back.
No, but we have policies for a reason, and if we're not gonna adhere to the policies, that's the problem that I have with it, that's all.
But we have.
Okay, all right, all right.
Now, I, we, we made a boo-boo a couple of times, um, a long time ago, but, um, it's not, it's not our standard.
Okay.
Yep. I hear you loud and clear, Robert. Okay, uh, I put some information in the transfer station, um, that the price per ton in February went up. And it says affected February first, but a document that I have from Rutland County Solid Waste has the date in February different than that. But it was February. We can say, I can say with certainty it's February, but the price now went up to a hundred and thirty-six dollars and eleven cents per ton. And the main reason was Casella's raised their, their rates. Um, they, they're the ones that haul the trash to Coventry, right, Bob? That's really great.
Yes.
Um, and so, I've directed it, for a while, we were taking stuff to Rutland, um, and I directed this, the stuff to go back to New York, because there's, one of the places that we take it to in New York, they have to drive up on the pile of trash, and we were cutting tires. And I'm like, I started doing the math, I'm like, we could cut like probably ten tires a year still be within, underneath, um, less than taking it to Rutland. So, I said, start taking it back, and we'll deal with the tire issues. It's just a pain in the rear end to have to go down and fix the truck on-site in the mud and in the winter or whatever it is, so, um, but we were taking it back to New York, um, and it's still cheaper to bring it to New York than it is to go to Rutland, especially if they keep raising their rates.
Mm-hmm.
And this isn't the Rutland County Solid Waste District's rate. They kept their surcharge the same. This was Casella's fees, and there's two of them in there.
Question.
Go ahead, did I got a comment?
I don't know how to really word this, but if this place is so bad to unload because you're cutting tires or whatever, what about other people that are going there and unloading?
Well, people have problems there. I mean, I, I don't know what the, how many there are, but, I mean, we had cut tires, we had a, a box spring or mattress box spring wrapped around the axle of a truck, and Bob Ward had to go down there with torches and cut it, and, um, you know, so, there are issues, um, that, but they're not every week.
It would just seem that other companies would have a lot of trouble, and if there was a lot of trouble, you either fix it or we're not coming, not just us.
Bob might know more about it, but you drive, you literally drive up on the pile of trash and dump. So, whatever's in that pile of trash, you're driving over. That's all.
If we typically go there, how many times a year do we have to go down there and fix something?
I think we've only had two tires that were an issue, and then, and then the, um, box spring issue that I'm aware of. So, that's why I'm saying it's still cheaper, even if we had to buy more tires, it's still cheaper than to go.
Having ten tires a year is slim to none.
Yeah.
My drivers using all due caution?
You don't make me lie to you, Mike. I'm not with them, so I don't, you know, I don't really, I know.
Just, I'm gonna make a comment.
Yep.
You guys can do whatever with it. We have guys that do the best they can, but they haven't been in the business of taking that truck down there for years and years and years and years and years. So, some of this may be coming from inexperience, but I know they do a good job. They do the best they can, and I, I appreciate that. But I just, you know, you can speak to Hubbard's or Rutland, they go down there with eight or ten boxes every single day. They, they take them and tandem. They got the big roll-off trucks, and they don't seem to have too many problems.
Well, I think two, two since I've been here, it doesn't seem to me.
Yeah, that's not a lot.
I mean, critical mass here.
Yeah.
You know, but, um.
What I was gonna say, in regards to them raising their, their hall fees, the district surcharge is being proposed and going up too, so just be aware of that.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, I, I, I got an email not too long ago saying they're not going to, so.
Oh, they talked about it the other day, so.
Well, you're gonna keep an eye on that for us, right?
I, I will try. I'll do my best.
That's all we can ask.
Yep, yep.
All right. I mean.
Keep going, Mike.
Okay. God, did I stop highlighting? Oh, no. Um, I'm on page eight. Uh, at the bottom of the page, B FEMA, South Street Trestle. Um, so, that project kinda died again. It's, this is like a, this is like a federal grant. This, it is.
It's a federal.
But, um, it's, so it moved from rail management to the municipal assistance program, which is where, like, the, um, the TAP grants and stuff come from that take three, four years. So, Jackie Casino, um, is gonna no longer be the project manager, and she's gonna, you know, pass on the information to us on who that is, and, um, but she said, and I won't hear anything back until after the late, the meeting later this month. But that's that, that, that culvert that they're replacing on Route four A by Piantac Road, this is the same kinda culvert. It's a concrete. kinda culvert. It's a concrete box culvert. It's, was put in probably when the trestle was put in, which is, what, like, there's a date on it, like, 1927 or something like that. Um, and, uh, it's failing and needs to be replaced, and thank God that there was no, the, the VT trans could not find where it was turned over to the town, so they had to take it, they had to take it on, and, so, that's in its process, and...
Next moving at the speed of state.
Yeah, that's definitely, um, federal dollars involved with that one, too, so, um, but that has to have aquatic passages, that's why I asked her about the other ones. Um, the greater, uh, just to give an update on the greater, um, it's still being used, but they're monitoring the transmission fluid level. Um, last time, this not in here, I talked to Evan, that their seals looked replaced or new, so it might be something that they did when they had that thing apart, so it might not be even on us to worry about it. They, they would take care of it, but we're waiting to hear back on that one. Uh, vehicle replacement schedule we talked about earlier. There's nothing, no action needed on the CVS one. But they're gonna be there tomorrow at, at CVS, though, to, um, to get in that little concrete vault and snake the line, and they're gonna have somebody down at the sewer, at the railroad tracks on that manhole cover to see if anything flushes out of there, so they can get it before it clogs up. Somewhere like far further down the line, um, but, uh, the fact that we didn't know it was there and discovered this, um, it's actually, we got multiple places coming in, so they can clean back towards the library, into the building, and down towards railroad tracks. So we've discovered this little concrete jewel under the ground that's gonna help us determine what's wrong, why, why sewage is backing up into the castle, former castle in the old school. Um, Dewey Field, um, friends, John, John Alzander's working with Friends of Rec, um, on some of this fundraising stuff for our fields and our dugouts, and we're gonna engage some of the social services, our, um, yeah, um, what am I thinking about? The Legion and the Ma, the Masons and stuff like that, um, to see if they, we willing to help out, um, replacing, I know the girls' softball equipment, the catcher's equipment is something John said they need to, to buy, and it can't be bought for one person, 'cause you're dealing with little kids this big and then somebody this big, and you can see how the, how that might not work out so well.
This is a quick digression. Is there Town Sewer in Crystal Beach?
No. Oh, yes, Town Sewer, but, um, not Town Water.
I know water, I'm, I'm, there's a place to put the water, that's where I was going with this, okay.
Correct, and appropriate place to put the water.
Yeah, okay, I'm good, we can move on.
Um, yeah, the, uh, Rob replied back to this one on the Crystal Beach thing. Chief Mantello, uh, or one of his officers is trying to make contact with the individual that, that we believe is cutting the, the lock or the, or the chain on the, on new gate, 'cause they don't wanna walk all the way down, so they regular opening, so they're trying to go through that gate, that new gate, and they cut the chain, and, um, the person that we believe it is actually told the maintenance supervisor, "I don't wanna walk all the way down to the end," so he's cutting the...
Has it happened more than once?
Uh, according to Ken, yes.
Okay.
Um, but Rob went up, and there's no lock on it right now, and I'm not sure if they, if that was on purpose, uh, because I asked him to put the common lock on that we use, 'cause Russ needs to get in there for pump station maintenance, so if Crystal Beach puts a lock on it and then he doesn't have a key...
Yeah.
He's gonna cut it, or cut the chain. So, um, we're trying to resolve the, um, Laurel and Hardy show from happening there.
Woo!
All right, um, you heard about the police car?
Yep.
We haven't heard anything back from the AFG grant. We went a little bit anyway, but... Um, so this is, I talked to Heath, um, before the meeting, um, tonight, too, um, about, uh, I'm on page 16, I think it is, kinda cut off, um, about, we had a public safety committee, and, uh, the chairman was on it, and so was, uh, Mr. Lemmy. Um, I'm hoping that, uh, that came a discussion about, uh, having someone else to be on it as well. Um, it's not just for the now, but it's for the future, uh, of being on the public safety committee, so when these things come up about purchasing, large purchases like police cars and fire trucks and all this other stuff, um, or any big purchases, that it goes through the public safety committee, and it gets vetted through them, and then the public safety committee can bring it to the full board, but it's kinda, it's kind of a vetting process, rather than bring it to the full board and talk about it for six months and not really gain much traction on it, um, because there's a lot of questions involved, which there probably should be when you're spending four or $500,000.
So this is an outstanding opportunity to ask if any board member would be willing to volunteer to, to help me out on that committee.
I would.
Okay?
'Cause it's police, fire...
And highway.
And highway, and probably not EMS, 'cause they don't really have any big purchases, but, um, it could be things like policies or, you know, procedures and stuff like that, too.
Yeah.
That could be run through this thing.
And the, the big ticket right now is, um, truck replacement for World Highway and for this outfit here.
And, um, chief, uh, I talked, when I talked to Chief Goyette tonight, um, he said that any Wednesday, pretty much, if the public safety committee can meet them before their normal meetings, like a little bit early, um, that they'll, they're prepared to meet with the public safety committee to have that discussion on, uh, they're not ready on the engine six replacement, 'cause they're waiting for some information, or at least they were last week, um, or last meeting, um, but they are ready to talk about, um, the vehicle replacement plan, uh, to present that, and the, um, use of ARPA for what's in this, in here about the truck and the ATU TV and stuff.
They're ready to move on that now?
Yeah, he's ready to, ready to. It's, it's included in the vehicle replacement.
What you doing Wednesday after work?
This Wednesday?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know yet.
You wanna...
What time is it?
Well, Chief Goyette, uh, you're on, sorry if you can hear us, um, what time, did you say 5:30, that you guys could meet early before your meeting?
Yeah, 5:50, we could, the guy said they could be around.
5 o'clock Town Office. Can you be there?
Yep.
All right.
Can you, can you reach out to your folks, uh, chief, and see if they can meet at 5 o'clock, or you say 5 or 5:30?
5.
5 o'clock at the Town Office?
Five, yeah, I'll reach out and then talk to them.
Cause Wednesday's a drill night, so they start at 6, correct?
6, yep.
So let's meet at 5. That way, if we need an hour, we got it.
All right.
So when there is kinda put a, a box to drill, but we'll, we gotta change on the flag. Can't cut much fire line right now.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
It's hard to get a brush fire gun.
It's a natural load.
Yeah, but let's get this ball rolling, Heath, okay? I'll see you next, I'll see you Wednesday at 5.
Town Office?
Okay.
Yeah, conference room.
Thanks, Heath.
Yep.
All right.
That way Fireman come in here early and all that, we're, we're over there. We can focus on what we need to focus on. I'll, uh, bring you up to speed on where we're at, if, ahead of time, if you want.
Yeah. I'll, I'll send you the, the vehicle replacement plan before Wednesday night.
Okay.
Or tomorrow.
[laughing]
Uh, 'cause I know my days of the week, Bob.
Are you always sure about that?
And to be honest, I gotta find mine, because I have the one for highway.
But not the one for everybody else.
Well, I, I had one for fire, but I don't know where it is. So if I can't find it, I'll let you know, like, tomorrow morning.
Yeah, not in that one. So, um, the last thing would be, um, the update, highway, the, the common area, um, it got warm and started getting, um, activity around the common area and the gate. Somebody broke the gate up there on the southern side of the common area, um, for a second time, and we fixed it, so, not sure if it's being on purpose, or they're doing it on purpose or not, but, um, usually when the weather starts getting nice and they get access in there, that's when we start having problems. So it's getting, getting to that point, and then the dock complaints will come in and, you know, it's annual, runs its annual course, um, but it's been fixed for now.
The same fellow that's cutting the lock up in that same area?
I don't think so.
No?
No, I think it's, um, 'cause it's not locked. The gate's not locked.
And you can get it, it's got, you can get a four-wheeler around it, so I don't know, other than driving a car through it, why you would even need to open the gate.
Well, the last time that gate got broken was operator malfunction, so...
But, uh, it's the one on the, that goes out to the point?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I don't know why, 'cause you, I mean, people open and drive in there.
Yeah, like I said, you could get around it, other than a car.
Yeah.
Anything else to go right around, so...
I'm, I'm not really sure what the motivation is, why to break something, but they broke all 14 cinder blocks that the sailing camp had at Crystal Beach, 'cause they didn't get put inside, so somebody thought it was gonna be real fun to break them all up on them. So there are a big pile of cinder blocks now. Oh, anyway, that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then we're gonna move, any, any questions for the Town Manager before we move on? Seeing none, okay. Uh, purchase orders for approval.
This one here?
Yes, please.
I think you've kept us long enough, we're going home.
You're gonna miss all the fun.
I know, it's the best part, right?
Reading warrants.
[laughing]
We're spending your money, so...
Yeah, but we don't hear anything other than a dollar amount, and just cringe.
Well, we're trying to get it right for what it's worth to you. Make a motion, we approve purchase order number 051779. To the Treasurer, the County of Rutland, county tax assessment for fiscal year '25, but it's actually seven slash one slash 24 to six slash 30 slash 25, for a total amount of $40,745.36.
I'll second.
And moved and seconded. Any discussion?
It's less than it was last year.
Agreed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, we need a motion for the warrants.
We need that back. Just need a date there. What's the date, did we know?
I'll make a motion that we approve the following warrants, number 0325R, and the amount of $6,921.30.
What, what?
50 cents.
50 cents. I'm too tired. Uh, warrant 0314, $38,421.88. Warrant 0321, for $1,799.270, no, $1,799,276.37. Warrant 0325, in the amount of $65,902.79. Warrant 0314P, $20,722.46. 021...
Nope.
0, 0321P, in the amount of $20,441.46.
No, you gotta redo the last one again.
Warrant numbers 02321P, in the amount of $20,241.46.
There you go. It's been moved and seconded to approve the warrants.
I'll second it, I don't think it's been seconded.
They're right, thank you. It's been moved, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Is that $1,700 that, oh, I thought that was my paycheck, damn it.
[laughing]
That was the Sleep Valley.
Next payday raise, you might get to that, Mr. Jones.
[laughing]
Good one.
So have I called that question? I don't believe so.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, Rob. Uh, what's your name, Bob? Start signing.
It's B, that's all I can tell you.
Why does it say not action items?
Well, your name is Robert.
It is, that's right.
I even know your middle name.
Yeah, I know you do. You're one of the few that do.
The V?
The V.
Yeah.
You know it too, probably, no?
I even know how you...
I've seen it so many times.
I even know how you got your middle name.
Oh, you do, yeah.
I've got a middle name.
My grandmother and your grandmother were pretty tight.
I've got a middle name.
Yeah, that's right.
As you recall.
You have what, you have a middle name? Mary, Lee's not your middle name?
Mary Lee's my middle name. Lee is.
Oh, yeah.
Mary Lee is not one name.
Okay.
It's my grandmother and my father, Mary Lee.
Yeah.
That's why I call her Mrs. Harris, it's actually shorter.
It's, it's, can't get it wrong. Bob Spalding never told you the story of when we were in first grade together in Fairhaven?
Well, he did.
We traded shoes in school, he doesn't remember this. We traded shoes in school and, and...
Both or just one?
Both, and whatever parent said, "No, that's not happening," um, and we had to trade back shoes, and Bob doesn't remember that, but I do, we're very, at St. Mary's School in Fairhaven.
I remember St. Mary's School, but that's about all I remember.
I could tell any story now, Ben.
Yeah, you can. I can't tell if it's true or not. I didn't realize we had a bad culvert in Brown Farm Road.
This is the first I heard of it.
I think it's come up in passing before. It's been on the manager's report for a while, but this is the first time, I think, we've actually discussed it recently.
Okay.
Brown Farm?
Yeah, I didn't know nothing about that. Well, during Irene, not Irene, but during the, the April 2019 storm, it was, the, the whole bank was carved out and damaged there, and we had FEMA come in, and FEMA said, "That didn't happen because of this storm," and they didn't prove it.
I remember that conversation.
Nice.
Well, take this, I'll have Mike print me another one.
You sure?
I didn't put anything else on it.
Okay.
So can you print me another one of those?
Okay, and I'll print them out for everybody, and I'll email it as well.
Well, Bob has hard copy.
I still have, I still have some stuff I, you know, that I have to dig out for, for minutes of meet, from the select board meetings, of what was said. That, that's all email stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And I printed all the emails, so I had it for, like, backup.
Okay.
Um, but I didn't think you'd wanna see every email, but I'll, I'll, I have them.
Well, at this point, I just wanna make sure that what we say is credible and accurate.
That's why...
And I'm very confident that we did offer to replace that culvert at one point in time. And I still think that's the most viable solution, is to, to fix it.
Well, if they treat the water like he's asked, there'll, there'll be no dirty water going through the culvert, unless there's like a raging torrent coming through there.
Well, there's exceptions to it, you know, I mean, you have your 100-year event and your 50-year events, but normal day-to-day stuff should be manageable. That's what the state hydrologists are gonna tell us, is what, you know, what's ma, what, what we need to do to manage that situation, and him blocking the culvert is gonna create a problem.
Water's gonna run downhill, we all know that.
That's for Mrs. Gee's house.
And if there's not a pipe there, there's gonna be a bigger problem.
It's gonna run across either him or, his or his neighbor's yard.
But I think we gotta check on that, because we may not be dealing with him at that point. If he blocks it off, we may be dealing with the neighbor.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's why, 'cause now that he has an attorney involved, usually that's when we have to have our attorney deal with his attorney.
Yeah, that's what I mean, you should probably...
Can I have one of these?
You can.
All right, there's a long chain of events that lead up to this.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, it all starts back in, the, the select board, Tomitori was chair, and they were meeting in the old Town Office, so it's gone back a few days.
And then those additional homes built, regrading...
Which were...
I mean, technically, it's illegal to divert water from your property to your neighbors.
Or into Town Highway. Remember, you guys dealt with that up on Creek Road?
Yeah.
So, have you got six?
Two, three, five, six.
You also have something...
It's 10 of 10.
That needed signed by everybody that was in the basket. You also had something that needed signing by everybody that was in the basket.
Have two meetings at ten o'clock for the.
It was in my, and I signed it and put it into, I think, Bob Spalding's.
We gotta get Mr. Leamy back here. We never went to ten o'clock and ten-thirty last meeting.
Well, I think.
What the hell are we doing?
I think that's me. Every meeting I'm in always runs over, so I might have brought that package with me.
I think allowing five minutes for citizens' concerns and five minutes for the police update were a bit optimistic at starters.
Okay.
All right. And we seem to have pretty full agendas with a lot to talk about, and I don't, you know, I can be a little bit more rude, I suppose, but I don't choose to do that.
No, I understand. And all those people that have the house next to that brick, they needed to talk.
That's the old Olive Eddie, that's the old, wasn't the old Eddie house that, when they're talking about, the yellow one?